000 via Santa Maria, Mission Vito, California 92691. The public, including public attending a teleconference location, are invited to address the board regarding items listed on the agenda. Comments on an agenda item will be accepted during consideration of that item or prior to consideration of the item in the case of a closed session item. Please turn in comment cards to the board secretary prior to the item you wish to speak on. Call to order. Roll call. Ring Jack from Treasure.
Here.
Albert Diaz, Secretary.
Present.
Joseph Haney, Vice Chair.
Present.
Cassandra Vernon, Board Chair.
Present.
Fudge of Allegiance, who? Who is it? Fudge tonight.
She has somebody.
She has somebody.
Do we know who it is?
He's right here. Tammy?
I'm right here.
Who was doing our practice?
Watch this! Oh!
Send us some.
Okay.
Can I get us a chair?
Okay.
Put your eye out over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And name, what's the name of the, what's his name? Excuse me?
Max.
Max. Thank you, Max.
Good job, Max.
Thank you very much. Okay, approval of agenda for regular board meeting for November 30th, 2017. May I have a motion to approve the board agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, I will second it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Okay, tonight, we are very privileged to have the Salabac Valley student performance, the Guitar Club. And so, Mr. Sax.
Thank you.
This is your group.
Hello, everyone.
Can we move out so that we can?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So, welcome, everybody. Tonight, we have a little demonstration. First, we're gonna have our Guitar Club perform for you, and then, we actually have the students who want affectionately, I affectionately call ukulele writer, do a performance for us. But first, we have our Guitar Club. Okay, we have, every Friday morning, we have a gaggle of students come, about sixty-five-ish, including the intermediate group. They come to meet in Honor Hall, and they make a lot of noise, and it's a lot of fun. But, the students who are more proficient at playing need to go into my room where it's a little bit quieter, and they can focus a little bit more on their music. So, this is a part of that group. What we're gonna be doing today, one of the things I focus on here in the music program is functionality, right? When we go out into, we learn all these things in the music classroom, but if we can't apply it out in the real world when we're playing, then it doesn't really do any good for us, right? So, what we've been working on the last few weeks is just a blues form, okay? Simple blues tune, dominant blues. So, those of us that know what a dominant chord is, we're adding a little bit more color into it, right? We just have, don't remember, Major Chyad, right? Don't be soul. Our soloist broke his finger, so he was unable to join us. So, what we're gonna do is mimic the solos of a blues tune. Normally, when you play blues or any kind of jazz tune, you play through what's called the head or the melody, and then you go on to solos where everybody takes a solo, and then you play the melody now. So, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna mimic the guitars, providing the chord structure That's why I'm here, right? and the basis for soloist myself, who's gonna be in the back because they're in the focus, right? So, we're gonna mimic that functionality that we'd actually have if we got called for a gig out in the real world, right? Okay. No, that's, I'm here because I love teaching music. So, Opa Salabac, intermediate Guitar Club. Alright, so next, we're gonna have Ukulele Writer come up. Ready? Okay? One, two, one, two, ready, and... So, on one, on one hand, we have functionality. On the other, we have a very functional instrument, right? But we have just sheer talent in this little boy, right? He's picked up the ukulele all by himself, he's learned all these chords by himself, I've given him a little bit of help, but I've done very well by way of helping with his instrument. So, we're gonna do our obligatory Isversion of Somewhere Over the Rainbow, okay? Focusing our, our ukulele, maybe giving a little bit of melody for some, some support, right? Okay, ready? Alright, you can have a song. Alright, so that's just a little glimpse of everything that we do here at Opa Salabac. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to get a ukulele club. Truly, truly, we have a whole lot of students that wanna play ukulele, I wanna make sure that they can do it properly, right? Now, this is how I can play a word, now I'm done, right? No, we need to learn how to actually play, right? So, thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you to our musicians, our wonderful musicians. And thank you, Mrs. LaHaw, Mrs. Bridges, and the board for inviting us to come play. Thank you very much.
We're gonna go into closed session in just a moment. Thank you, parents, for bringing the kids out. They did a great job. Mr. Sessions, Dean of SOC.
Good evening, board members. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak now, so that we can head back over to SOC and get Fernando's company key looks sad.
Bring him some food.
We'll bring you a plate of food. But no, I just wanted to address the board on behalf of myself, the staff, students, parents, but also Ms. Pasco, her daughter is being married. They're at their rehearsal dinner tonight, so she wanted me to extend her gratitude to all of you as well. You all do an amazing job as board members, not only representing our organization, but really, all the students, everyone. And tonight, our amazing Honor Society has put together a small token of appreciation for all you do.
I don't even have the car!
But no, honestly, you guys signed up to be board members, and I don't know how you guys do this, plus your other real jobs, right? Because it really, we're so appreciative of everything you've done, and all the decisions that you've made, and just everything going forward, so please accept this on behalf of SOC. Thank you so much. Oh, and, the Wall of Thankfulness, our champions wrote what they're thankful for, so make sure to check that out later. Pretty hilarious what they wrote. So, I had to screen it, so it should be good.
Okay, what time is it in here? Now, 5:52, 5:52. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go back over there.
Okay. Oh, we're gonna have to wait. There are no public comments on closed session items, so we are going into closed session at 5:52 PM, and we will return as close to 7:30 as we can, I promise. And go ahead, take your binder, take your red, silver script. Presentation, Salabac Valley site update, Garrett Bridges, Dean. Good evening.
So, what we have prepared for our site update is a seven, almost eight-minute video that will include pictures of our kiddos participating in the high school night that we had, the SOC SV football volleyball games, the first Blackwell store where the students get to spend their scholarships for goodies, Red Ribbon Week, our middle school dance, Literature Day, and our fifth grade science camp, and our sixth grade camp to Catalina. So, Mr. LeBlanc is going to start the video. Alright, so, that's just a little bit of what has happened the last couple months. Upcoming events, starting tomorrow, I believe, we have our classic book fair in the library, our Polar Express Day Jingle Jam eighth grade performance of Frosty Follies, then we have winter break, eleven days. And then, our fourth grade walkthroughs in January, National School Choice Week, parent professional conferences, and then the fifth and sixth grade walkthroughs. So, the smiles on the screen are the reason that all the staff and members of this organization come to work every single day. So, that's all I have. Bridges out.
Thank you.
Nicely done, Mr. Bridges. Presentation to the board, Honor Society.
Hi! I don't really have a presentation, but we wanna thank you guys for your service, and our teachers, and our staff at our school. We're very thankful for everything that you guys do. We are extremely appreciative for everything that you guys do for our campus, for SOC, for Kino. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Hi! So, thank you guys for coming out tonight, we really appreciated that. And as we're coming into the Thanksgiving holiday season, I really wanted to show thanks for more than just what we typically think of, our homes, our friends, our families. We really wanted to focus on Opa, and why each one of our families chose to come to this school, 'cause that's what we all did, is chose to come here, and we've all chosen to stay here. So, I really wanted to spread why we're doing that, and remind our families what we came here for, and why we love them. And I just wanna just, for a quick second, just talk to you, and I just wanted to share about me personally. So, I am a mom of five, and three come here, three come here, and two at home. And we chose to come to Opa because of, one of my sons was not thriving at his school. And I'm sure if you guys are all parents, or at least have hearts and work with kids, you know what it's like. And we tried everything, from medicine to therapy, to, we tried anything to make it work. Our school was using terms from emotionally disturbed to ADHD, we didn't know what was wrong with our son. And I'm not trying to cry, but it was a tough time for us as a family. And I just want to thank Opa, because we got our son back. He is thriving, he had no friends, and he's really popular. He was one of the quarterbacks on the football team. He has friends that call him daily. He's getting straight As and Bs. He just got his first school award ever. He got one in science. So, I just wanna thank you guys, 'cause I know this is a lot of work for you, 'cause we know what it's like to put in the work, so we can only imagine what you guys are doing behind the scenes. So, you guys, you need to see and hear that there's stories that go along with us, and there's a reason why I drag all of them over here, I'm a big fan, every single week. So, this is us wanting to thank you guys. And we did, thankful leaves. We had the kids all do leaves, and we had them around, and we asked all the families to just write why they're thankful for Opa. We wanna make sure that we present all of you guys. Let me get this, yeah, each one of you guys, there's yours.
Thank you so much.
And Dr. Hall, sir. And do we have anyone from OCP here? So, we also have one for our charter holders, so we are giving that over to them. So, we wanted you guys to kind of take a little glance at what we have been able to hang up and show and display, and we've had...
This is just a little bit.
Just a little, there's been a lot. But we've had our teachers, and staff, and Mrs. Crowe, and they've been going in, and they've had, when there's free times, the kids have written things down, and they've come and asked for more leaves. So, there's been so many cute things, and there's a lot of love here for our school, and we just wanted to make sure that you guys all saw this firsthand. So, thank you. Thank you for doing what you guys are doing. Thank you to the, our administrators, thank you to Dr. Hall. We have a little bit more, hold on.
We're also extending this through December, so in December, we're going to do Snowflakes. So, we just want, you know, the kids are very grateful, they love this school, they love their teachers, they just, you know, we've done so much in the past year and a half that we have been opened, and, I mean, we are a very special school, so, you know, the kids love this, you know, being able to give back, and, you know, we're just very appreciative of you guys, so thank you so much.
These are also from Salabac. We just wanted to thank you guys a little bit more.
Thank you so much.
They're just little tokens, we can't do much, but just wanna make sure that you guys felt the love, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
These mean so much to us. Last year, we received notes from first and second graders, and we took them with us to state. And when we got denied, through all of our tears, we spent the whole night reading the letters. And it reminded us why we do what we do, even through the pain, so, so thank you so much.
I have a little holiday something. This is from me.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's getting colder.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Just one of them.
Oh, so we can show?
No, 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 the back, that's a blank sheet.
Oh, we're opening up the bag, the bag, the bag. The bag. A card? Ooh, I can see why you want this open.
Ooh.
And, most important, now we're champions. Thank you. Wow, presentations are nice. Thank you, everyone. Well, you got the good stuff out of the way first, huh? Thank you.
Good news versus bad news.
You're gonna follow that up.
I, you know what, that's why I primed you first. Okay. Okay, so we are now to, what does the charter say? Element 1D achieving state priorities. Just a reminder to everyone, and you've heard me say this often, and I'll never stop saying it, Opa is not about zip codes, it's about a charter. And that is what unites us. And so, we thought it was a really good idea to spend time at each board meeting revisiting the charter, to make sure that we all understand the charter. And there's a lot to understand, and of course, you know the charter exceptionally well, so I'm so glad you're with us tonight to do this. And you're gonna be speaking about Element 1D achieving state priorities. Tammy LaHaw.
And what we found, and I worked rather closely with Dr. Hall as well, not only is it reporting out about the Local Control and Accountability Plan, or better known as the LCAP, it's also a matter of some of the other milestones that we had to meet. So, I'm going to kinda give you what does the charter say, what are the eight state priorities, and how we have met them according to the California Dashboard. So, what is the LCAP? It's the Local Control Accountability Plan. It's a critical part of California's local control funding formula, the LCFF. It's a three-year local education agency, or LEA, Level Plan that is updated annually. The plan describes the goals, actions, services, and expenditures to support positive student outcomes as they address state and local priorities. Each school district must engage parents, educators, employees, and the community to establish these plans. In addition, it describes the supports for students, their annual goals, and specific actions that the district will take to achieve the vision and goals of the school. And finally, the plans will describe the school district's overall vision. Now, what does the charter say in Element 1D? How learning best occurs? Opa believes that learning best occurs in the following ways. First, when parents participate in the educational program. Opa offers many opportunities for parent participation in their child's education, including the services on the latest research regarding student learning and the use of technology in education. This is offered both to students, and parents, and teachers, as well as through all of our educational meetings. Secondly, in a collaborative environment, Opa believes that learning best occurs. Opa is committed to collaborative, collaboration efforts among and between students, teachers, parents, administration, and community in an effort to maintain a successful school. Opa also believes that learning best occurs in a climate where there are measurable goals. Educational planning and instruction at Opa is practiced through a backwards design model. This standard-based system that gives direction to academic programs and is designed to ensure college and career readiness supports our academic success. Are you sending me back through?
Sorry.
Take me back, please. Just leave it right there. My goodness. Further students are assessed through multiple measurement tools and focus on the many facets of our many learners. Opa also believes in a climate of accountability. Opa provides a continuous collection and application of data for students, parents, teachers, administrators, and members of the Board of Directors as well. Opa believes that this takes place with highly specialized teachers and staff. Opa has determined that specialized staff development programs provide proactive instructional leadership. Opa provides a broad spectrum of data-driven training opportunities for both staff and administration, and participates in selected professional development programs. They also believe that we have programs that have strong literacy components. Literacy provides a foundation for most academic success. Opa provides intensive remediation and intervention programs to all of their students. And finally, in a program that incorporates technology, and through our non-core computer instruction and the availability now of one-to-one Chromebooks, Opa provides students with the knowledge and skills required to enter the business and social opportunities of the 21st century, as stated also in the charter. Our technological innovations enhance communication, and hence the relationships with the academic environment. Now, there are eight state priorities. Opa's annual goals to be achieved through the schoolwide, through schoolwide, will be based on the following eight priorities. These are found in Element 1F of our charter. The LCAP must focus on eight areas identified as state priorities. The plans also demonstrate how the LEA's budget will be used to help achieve the goals that are aligned to the eight state priorities, and assess each year how well the strategies in the plan were able to improve outcomes. Priority number one. Basic services. Teachers in the LEA, which is Oxford Preparatory Academy, are appropriately assigned and fully credentialed, providing all students access to fully credentialed teachers and instructional materials that align with state standards and safe facilities. The degree to which the teachers of the school district are appropriately assigned must be fully credentialed in the subject areas. For the pupils they are teaching, every pupil in the school district has sufficient success, or access, excuse me, to the standards aligned instructional materials. School facilities must be maintained and in good repair. Now, it was also, it is also required that we report out an update on the California Dashboard tonight. And in doing so, you should know that both SV and SOC have updated the dashboard to indicate MET for priority number one. The California School Dashboard must be updated by the local education agency in four of the eight priorities. These four priorities are considered local indicators. We were able to indicate MET for both SV and SOC campuses because all of our teachers are appropriately assigned, all students have access to the curriculum, and all of our facilities are safe and clean. Priority number two. Our charter states that it's the implementation of state standards. The state is the implementation of the academic content and performance standards. This requires implementation of California's academic standards, including the Common Core State Standards in English Language Arts and Math, Next Generation Science Standards, English Language Development, History, Social Science, Visual and Performing Arts, Health, Education, and Physical Education Standards. This includes implementation of the academic content and performance standards, including how the programs and services will enable ELL, which is English Language Learners, to access the Common Core Academic Content Standards for purposes... access the Common Core Academic Content Standards for purposes of gaining academic content knowledge and English Language proficiency. This is priority number two for the California Dashboard for our schools. Both SV and SOC have updated the dashboard to indicate met. Priority number two. Implementation of the academic content and performance standards is considered another one of those local indicators. The reflection tool available in the dashboard was used to identify the level at which we are now implementing the state standards. Priority number three. This is probably the easiest for OPA to come by. It also appears in element 1F. Parent involvement and participation, including the local community, is engaged in the decision-making process and the educational programs of all students. Parental involvement, including efforts that OPA makes to seek parent input in making decisions for the LEA, including how the school promotes parental participation in programs for unduplicated pupils. Those are our English Language Learners, our low-income students, and our foster youth. They are considered your unduplicated pupils and individuals with exceptional needs. Again, on the dashboard, both SV and SOC have updated the dashboard to indicate that they are met. We utilized survey information for this, gathered it to assist in the development of the LCAP. The survey results indicated that we are promoting parental participation in programs, a lot of alliteration there, and the school goals with our LCAP as it relates to the established goals for other local control funding priorities. Priority number four. Pupil achievement. I'm going to, I have a whole page. And what I'm gonna tell you, that is improving student achievement and the outcomes, along with multiple measures, including test scores, English proficiency, and college and career preparedness. You've seen the scores. Pupil achievement speaks for itself. If you need more data, it's there. Priority number five. Pupil engagement. One does not go without the other. If your children are not engaged, they are not achieving. So supporting student engagement, including whether students attend school or are chronically absent, this is where this comes in. Pupil engagement is measured by all of the following, as applicable to Oxford Prep. School attendance rates, chronic attendance or absenteeism rates, middle school dropout rates, we don't have a problem with any of the three, and the last two have to do with high school dropout rates and high school graduation rates. And it is my hope that we do our jobs well enough, TK through eight, that our students who promote from this school, or SOC, or even previously Chino, do not add to the data that supports this final two. Priority number six. The school climate. Again, as labeled in element 1F of our charter, highlights school climate and connectedness through a variety of factors such as suspension and expulsion rates and other locally identified means. School climate as measured by all of the following, as applicable. Pupil suspension rates, pupil expulsion rates, and other local measures, including surveys of pupils, parents, and teachers, and the sense of safety and school connectedness. This is our fourth indicator. Both SV and SOC have updated the dashboard now to indicate met. Based on survey results, it was determined that students feel safe and connected to our schools. However, in an effort to improve the educational experience for all students, including low-income ELL learners and foster youth, each site is researching the implementation of positive behavior interventions and supports, or a similar student support program, as indicated in our LEA, or our LCAP plans, I'm sorry. Priority seven. Our charter states that its pupils have access to and are enrolled in a broad course of study. The state calls it course access. This is where ensuring all students have access to classes that prepare them for college and careers, regardless of what school they attend, or where they happen to live. The extent to which pupils have access to and are enrolled in a broad course of study that includes all of the subject areas, including the programs and services developed and provided to unduplicated pupils and individuals with exceptional needs, and the program and services that are provided benefit these pupils as a result of the funding. Number eight, again, is the outcome. Measuring other important student outcomes related to required areas of study, including physical education and the arts. And I'm very proud to wind this up with OPA SV's and SOC's LCAPs. Both align with the state requirements and our charter. They were board-approved in June of 2017. Will be updated and brought back to the board for approval again in June of 18, and they are a three-year picture of where we intend to go. Lohoff, out.
Okay, next under Presentations, and it's very appropriate because one of their big responsibilities is the LCAP. Advisory Council update from the Saddleback Valley Campus. Do we have anyone here today to give an update? How you doing?
Good. I'm gonna be super quick, because I know there's lots going on. The big thing we wanted to let you guys know is that we are, we have all our members, I know when Mr. Trebus presented the last time, we had some vacancies. We now have 10 members sitting on our board comprised of four parents, four staff members, one classified, three certificated, and then we have two students, our current eighth-grade student and our ASP president. We're using a current student instead of alumni, because as Mr. Trebus had mentioned, we have eight alumni from our first year. So, we have all that, and our big focus right now is the, last year, the Academy Fund monies. We're in charge of deciding where that goes, and so there was a lot of discussion. Parents and teachers came and presented ideas, and the board talked, oh, board, what are we, a council, talked, and we decided we weren't gonna meet in, originally, we weren't gonna meet in December, because it's the holidays and no one wanted to meet in December. But we thought it was really important that we continue this discussion and not make any decisions too quickly, and be, and looking at, well, if we buy something that has a renewal every year, can we sustain that? Are we, we don't wanna buy something for one year and then not have it the next year? Looking at our honor mods, because it's our inaugural year, and maybe we wanna do something towards that. So we are meeting again in December to really go into that, and basically, everyone on the board had a, council had a job for, had a job in terms of researching certain areas. So academics, or I know Mr. Sax gave an amazing presentation about specific music instruments that he wanted, and so all looking at costs and really what we can do, and how we can use the money to really enrich all the students. And we also wanted to focus, because the parents really pushed, it was a great Academy Fund, it was, oh gosh, I'm gonna say the acronym wrong, there was an acronym for it, and it was like Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And so we felt that it was important to stick with that, because that was the way it was advertised to parents. And so we didn't wanna say, oh, we're gonna re-carpet the school, but you donated to Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. So looking at those kinds of things to make sure that what was advertised to parents was how we were using their money. So that's basically where we're at.
Okay.
Okay, bye.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Advisory Council update, South Orange County Campus.
Hi, how you guys doing?
Good.
Good. So, my name's Andrew Nitsursis, I'm a fourth-grade teacher at SOC, and also the vice-chair at the Advisory Council, and we just wanna give you a brief update of what we're doing as well. And so, we approved our bylaws, which took longer than we thought, but we did do that finally, so that was achieved. And we also have had a regular meeting and then a special council meeting at our last session. And so at our special council meeting, we voted to proceed with resurfacing our blacktop with the monies from the Academy Fund. And so the proposal also includes repainting all the areas and then purchasing new student basketball courts. If you've obviously seen the campus, you guys went to Mr. T's classroom, but in that process of getting those new porables, the cement and everything around there was a bit destroyed, so, and I don't think it's been done since Barcelona has been there, so, so the kids are, if people have any question as divine intervention, sometimes you might see a ball go up in the air, and like 100 kids, and like, well, that's gotta hit somebody. But then it doesn't, and you're like, well, that was amazing. So, anyway, we're working on getting that done. And so, we also reached out to the parents, because we thought it'd be a good idea as an advisory board to do that, but we also reached out to them via an email survey, and so we found that the results demonstrated overwhelming support for that. It was 94% of the respondents expressed that they would like their children to play on a nice blacktop. So, there was that. And then, we are also in the process of scheduling a joint council meeting with Saddleback Advisory Board. We feel tonight was amazing, and we wanna continue with that, and so we're excited to do that. And then, as an advisory board, something that we discussed, that they wanted me to make a statement just to the Board of Directors, this is a written statement that they, we've kind of collectively done, and so, as it says here, it says, "As a council, we would also like to comment on the agenda item number seven titled 'Consideration and Potential Adoption of Plan to Fill Board Vacancy.'" So on behalf of the SOC Advisory Board Council, I'm here to discuss an item that we feel needs immediate action, and the process of selecting a fifth voting board member has drastically exceeded a reasonable amount of time. And so we have had a vacant seat on the board since the resignation of Naveen Adley on August 24th, 2017. So we are in understanding that the candidates are in place, but the committee must meet and recommend a new member to the board. So if this committee is failing to do so, it is now necessary to examine our options. And so we feel either select a date in the next two weeks that this committee can meet, or find an alternative member that can be present on this committee. So the SOC Advisory Council requests a special Board of Directors meeting take place within the next 30 days, in which the fifth board member will be voted. Obviously, that is an item that is on the agenda tonight, so I don't know what actions will be taken, or what discussions will be had, but we would hope that maybe you could give us some comments as to what you guys plan to do on that, and we're excited to hear your comments, so.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, don't know, but, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna move to communications comments from the Board of Directors. Mr. Haney?
No comments at this time.
Okay. Mr. Jackson?
Can I comment about anything?
Well, it's board comments.
Okay, good.
You're bored, right?
Yeah, no, I just wanna check.
Okay.
So, thank you very much for that. I concur. I feel like it's probably taken us too long. And I wanna just say that, what happened last month, it was last month, right, when we put that on the agenda and said, hey, we're gonna put a committee together? Well, what we didn't do is we didn't put a timeline in place. And so, we didn't say, hey, it was gonna happen by this day. And just, we learn lessons, right? So I feel like, in some ways, it's, well, it's a very steep learning curve, and I'll say that we learn lessons about stuff. We learn lessons like when you, when you tell a vendor or an attorney to, hey, do something, please, you have to put a time limit on it, and you have to put a dollar amount limit on it, to the extent that you can. And so we're learning about stuff like that. So although we committed to that, I feel like it's happening too slow, and we're just being too casual about it. So I agree. And I would love to see us really put some, some effort into doing this, you know, quickly, and not just saying, hey, we're gonna have a, we're gonna put a committee together and talk about it. And I got all excited, right? And now, here we are a month later, but we're still talking about it. Now we're talking about, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about the characteristics of a new board member, and what characteristics we want, when, haven't all those questions been asked and answered? I mean, I know they answered, asked them with Joseph, I'm still trying to figure out why they picked me, but, but if we can, like, you know, bring, we have all those thoughts, we have all those questions, let's hurry up. That's a long-winded way of saying, I'm with you, man. I feel like we're not acting quickly enough on stuff like that, and so we're pushing hard for that.
Actually, Senator, if I can speak, I do have something I'd like to say.
Okay.
First thing I'd like to say is thank you for everybody with the gifts. That was uncalled for and unnecessary. The Honor Society, Lisa, this, I was unexpected and really truly appreciate it. I'd also like to second something.
Joseph, can you speak in your microphone for me, please? This is Youtubelandia out here, you know.
I'm not used to microphones.
There you go.
I'm sorry. So, thank you again to everybody for the gifts. That was truly, it was really meaningful. But since we're talking about adding a board member, Raymond, and to address your point, and I was gonna bring this up when we got to the agenda item, but I'll go ahead and bring it up now. My hope, and I second what Raymond said, we've learned an important lesson, that when we say that we're going to do something, we have to say by a date, or we don't approve it. If we are unable to do that and resolve it as a board in an expedited way, there are, there's a third option that you may not be aware of. Section C, I wanna give you the rights citation, especially to the people in Youtubelandia that might be looking. Education Code 47604B allows an authorizer to appoint a member to the Board of Directors under certain circumstances. I would hope that it wouldn't come to that, but if we're going to deadlock and not ever be able to get an additional board member on there, there is a provision, and I have to believe that it was written into the code in anticipation of situations like this. So, I would hope we don't have to go there, but if the board is gonna fail to take action to put boards, to add the fifth member, I'm okay doing that. The governing board of a school district that grants a charter for the establishment of a charter school formed and organized pursuant to this section shall be entitled to a single representative on the Board of Directors of the nonprofit Public Benefit Corporation. Again, it's not an ideal situation, but if we're not able to add a member amongst ourselves, we do have another remedy in addition to the two that you suggested.
Well, he kinda stole, I wasn't really done.
Mr. Deas? We do have that as an agenda item, so.
What? What?
The board member.
Oh, I was gonna say, I have more comments.
Are you gonna go on?
Yeah, I was gonna talk about some of those. Sorry. So we're gonna talk about, because I wanna be sure that I can at least talk about this, because I'm, I don't wanna be hamstrung by an agenda item. So, we're gonna talk tonight about some funding, right? And we're gonna talk about buckets of money, right? So Chino has some money in the Chino bucket, SV and SOC have money in the Chino bucket. We're all a big organization, but we have these buckets of money. And so, I want everybody to have in their head that we exhausted our insurance policy, right? So, so, so we got some amount of money from an insurance carrier, right? But that money was paid to the entire school. It wasn't paid to a particular bucket, right? But it seems to me that all the money got deposited in one bucket. And so, we need to have a thoughtful conversation about how that, how that money gets distributed, if that makes sense, right? So if, if you have three friends, and we all pitch in, and we pay some percentage of a premium for an insurance policy, but then I, as one of those friends, I misbehave, and I expose these, you know, two of my friends to some, some risk, and the insurance policy pays out, well, the insurance policy shouldn't pay for just me. The insurance policy is paid for all of us, because we're all the policyholders, right? If that makes sense. And I don't wanna turn this into a, you know, big elaborate math conversation, but, but I wanna be thoughtful about this, so as we get to this, talk about funds, we're ready to talk about that meaningfully. And I wanna, and, because I'm kinda new, I don't know what I can talk about at that time, I don't know if that's gonna be able to come up at that time, and I wanna be sure it's part of the public dialogue as we talk about this. I feel like, got that policy, policy paid out, it should be split between all the policyholders in their respective percentages, right? So, so if I had 43%, and you had 22%, then the money should get the policy, because part of this is, remember, that we have no coverage now, right? When that policy maxes out, that policy limit is exhausted, right? So you've got no coverage for something, right? So, so you wanna have that money- So, you want to have that money kind of in reserve because part of that money in reserve is to be able to cover maybe future exposure. Does that make sense? Whereas if you put all that money in one bucket, the other two people that were part of that equation are totally exposed for that period of time. So, if something comes up later, there's nothing available for them, even though they paid into it, right? So, I don't know how, I don't know how that whole conversation comes to light, but I just want to be sure that that's part of the public dialogue, right? So, as we talk about that, you understand where that's coming from. So, there you go.
Okay, Mr. Diaz?
Well, I'm, I'll get the microphone ready.
He'll jump on you if you don't.
I know, that's, why do you think I looked over, Adam? I'm not gonna talk about agenda items until we get to it and I'm not going to add items, not on the agenda, to my, to my comments. Frankly, I just, I was, I loved what, what the campuses put together. I loved the mural that they did out there, the spread that they put, the camaraderie, the time, the boards. I want to spend a little bit more time looking at the banners, the presentation today, the, where is it? I still have the packet of letters that I got from the first and second graders and I cherish those. And I cherish this because the politics is not what I was here to do. The policies and procedures, sure, but to support this. And so, thank you for this because it's a great reminder as to what we're here to do and who we're serving when we invest the time that you guys are putting in, the time that we're putting in. It's, it's to serve these kids, so thank you. I appreciate it.
And I would also like to thank both Honor Societies for putting together tonight's feast, as we said out there at the time. To see the camaraderie, this is what it's all about. This is what builds great schools, this kind of parent involvement and support. To Saddleback, your thirty days of thankfulness for OPA, this is what it's all about and I'm truly thankful for you for doing that. I'm thankful for the teachers who are nurturing the next generation to be curious and caring and compassionate, which is, again, what OPA is all about and you don't always find in the traditional schools. And I know that we're all thankful for that. I'm thankful for our staff and administration for your continued commitment to excellence. I'm thankful for our board for your willingness to serve. And most important, I'm thankful to OPA's engaged parents. And as we saw in the report tonight, you see met, met, met. And a lot of that has to do with our parents, so thank you. And I'm also thankful for our agenda tonight. I think, as you will see, it's gonna be late night, but it's a very thoughtful agenda. I think we're pivoting from the past to the future, which is always very exciting because I know Albert and I have been mirrored in the past for the last year, so it's nice to be pivoting. We're talking about the selection of a new ED, we're talking about a new board member, and we're talking about a high-level overview of our organizational structure and staffing and job descriptions and salaries. So, I think it's a very thoughtful and probably ambitious agenda, but I'm glad that the day has finally arrived that we could be talking about these things. So, let's go ahead and also for the gifts, as, as Mr. Haney said, it's, it's not necessary, but it is so deeply appreciated. And as I said outside, you know, there's a reason why we go from Thanksgiving thankfulness into appreciation and gratitude. And we're entering into that, that season and feeling the appreciation that's coming from you is, is just so meaningful and so heartfelt, so thank you so much. And now, we're going to move into comments from the interim managing director, Dr. Hall.
So, I will echo much of what our board members have shared about my appreciation for this evening's event before the board meeting. What a phenomenal idea and, oh my goodness, I will cherish that, that collection of thankfulness leaves for my entire life. And I think that's a great gift idea for family members and, and so I might just copy. So, thank you very much and I really truly do look forward to the spring event. So, in whatever capacity I'm serving this organization at that time, I do look forward to that.
Do you want to use this one or just use the document?
Oh, I'll use that. Is it in? Okay. So, I'm going to use my comment time to update the board on some directives, or I don't want to call them directives, some staff direction that was given at the last board meeting. So, I do believe you have these in your packets, right there in the very front pocket. So, the first one you're, we're seeing on the screen is the shared employee list. It's, and so it... Mr. Jackson's making sure that it's big enough for everybody to see there are copies in the back. So, for our friends at home, correct? They can see it? Okay. So, this is the shared employee list. So, it does indicate every employee that we have who is split between sites. I would like to give an update on Lisa Sarnaki, our coordinator of attendance. I recently worked with our coordinator of human resources and Charter Impact to ensure that her salary is being split eighty percent for Saddleback Valley and twenty percent at South Orange County because she is the coordinator of attendance and does a lot of work with Calpads and our attendance reporting for the California Department of Education. And we did just receive certificates of appreciation from no other than FICMAT for the excellent work that she does with regard to upkeeping Calpads. So, maybe they'll become our friends. Let's see, I don't know if you have any questions about the people on this list, but I was asked to get this information to you and, and there it is. So, anyone where Scholar Academy is listed next to their names, it may not say salary paid by Sped Funds, but if it says Scholar Academy next to their name, they are paid out of Scholar Academy Funds. And if you look down to Lisa Hall, I'm currently paid eighty percent out of the general fund and because I'm maintaining my, my duties to Scholar Academy, I paid twenty percent from Scholar Academy Special Education Funds. Are there any questions on the shared employees list?
So, when it says, so when it says a percentage there, like, is it fifty-fifty? When it's shared, is it, so it doesn't say a percentage is fifty-fifty?
No, if it doesn't say a percentage, it's sixty-forty.
Got it.
Based on ADA?
Based on ADA.
Okay. Very good. Anybody have any questions?
Next. And the next thing we're looking at is our overarching organizational chart as it looks today. So, the four of you are at the top and that vacant executive director position sits there in the middle with me underneath and out to the sides, we have our amazing chancellors and our deans, and we do have our dean on special assignment currently listed there. And then, we have our coordinators underneath. So, we do have the coordinator of independent study position for the South Orange County campus currently being filled by teachers who are receiving a stipend for that. So, it has yet to be seen if we need to fill that position. It was a necessary position when we had two campuses with very robust independent study programs. Now that we have one campus with a robust, robust independent study program, it's, it's being handled nicely by two teachers who are sharing the responsibilities of doing the tours and getting the information and working with the attendance clerk to make offers and, and so it seems to be running smoothly without that position filled at this time. And I'll probably have to put these on. Hello? Any questions? So, this does not include every single employee in the organization. This is just the overarching organizational chart. And I have had a board member ask for a, a workup of every employee and their hire date and, and their salary. And so, I'm working with our director, excuse me, our coordinator of human resources to put that together and we'll share that with all the board members when it's completed. Any other questions? Or any questions? Okay. What do we got here? Okay. I had a request to look at the comparison of, of insurance. And so, it'll be hard to look on the screen. This is one of those things that's easier to look at with the pieces of paper in front of you. So, we have a two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen summary of insurance. We have a two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen summary of insurance. And then, we have an attempt to do a premium comparison. So, the premium comparison was difficult to do because I'll use the words of Mrs. Reyes who assisted with this. We are comparing oranges and apples here. So, comparing oranges and apples is difficult, but we made an attempt. And part of why we're comparing oranges and apples is that we have much more in-depth coverage at this time in, in great part due to our agreement with the Orange County Department of Education. There were, there were things that we needed to get more coverage on, as Mr. Diaz can speak to in depth, if you would like. However, there are some areas that I would like to point out just quickly. I'd like to point out the excess crime and the crime. We now have crime coverage because we've had some, some unanticipated crime that revealed itself. And if that were to happen today, we would be covered for that. So, I refer to the FICMAT report when I say crime. So, we now have some coverage for that. And so, when you look at this comparison, the, I guess the important thing to look at, because this was what I believe to be the overarching concern, when you look at the totals for the two thousand sixteen premium, we were at two hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-three. And for the two thousand seventeen premium, we were at three hundred, we are at three hundred sixty-nine, two hundred sixty dollars. So, with additional coverage and with the experiences we've had, we are not paying exorbitantly more than we were.
So, say that number again. So, in two thousand sixteen, we're paying what?
Three hundred twenty-three, eight hundred seventy-three.
Got it. So, it's only a fourteen percent increase. Got it. Okay.
I love that you can do that math in your head.
And what did we budget for in?
Oh, gosh.
Our seventeen, eighteen?
Thank you for that. Very, very relevant and meaningful question. Mr. Stern might be able to help me out with that. I don't know how quickly he'll be able to help me out with that, but I apologize for not having the answer to that question off the top of my head, but I can certainly get it to you if not right this second. It looks like not right this second, but certainly within the next day or two.
Okay.
Okay?
Andy, have that answer?
I can get you a little bit, but asking questions like that on the fly, not that.
Not our favorite, but we love.
That's fine. If we have it in the next couple of days, that's fine.
Don't even try.
No, it's better, better to just come to us with.
With the solid number.
Right, solid. And this, but this, the premium for two thousand seventeen, that wouldn't have factored in any, any increase perhaps as a result of a claim that was filed recently? Okay.
It would factor in an increase that, so yes.
Already?
Already.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Thus, the need for the additional crime coverage.
Got it.
Dr. Hall, is there a reason? I mean, obviously, part of it, I assume, is the closing of the Chino campus, but our workers' comp is almost a third of what it was?
It's the closing of our Chino campus.
So, two-thirds of our workers' compensation premium was attributed to Chino?
That's not, that's not typically the way, the way it works.
Right. Please, Andy, and Candy can speak to it.
I wasn't, I wasn't involved in your discussions with your insurance provider, so I can't speak for sure, but typically, the way workers' comp works is that you provide on an annual basis, you look at your employee base and your experience and workers' comp providers provide some narrow band that's actually dictated by the state, what workers' comp rates are. My suspicion about why it's down so much is that nobody has really looked at your employee or that the employee base and the experience and the type of employees they are, whether they're office workers or not office workers, or professional or technical, or what they're exposed to, which, which puts people into bans on the workers' comp rates that hadn't been looked at in a few years, is my suspicion. But since I wasn't involved, that's my guess about it, but I wasn't involved, so I can't speak for sure.
So, we were overpaying?
That's my guess. And as part of the whole process of looking at insurance and revising insurance, somebody, I mean, and changing your insurance provider for workers' comp, which there is some, some ban for competition. It's not completely dictated by the state, but, but there are some bans about and requirements about how it works. That's my suspicion, but don't, you know, without looking at it, I can't say for sure, but that's what my guess is.
You like how me and you take a paragraph to say that and he says it in two words? Joseph does that.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have. And Mrs. Reyes, who, who worked on getting our insurance covered this year, was nodding as, as Mr. Stern was speaking, so she is confirming with her nod that, yes, indeed, that is what occurred. And then, I have one final flow chart.
And Candy, did our X mod change as well? Do you know?
Our what mod? I'm sorry.
Our X mod, our experience modifier went down, I think.
Probably what he was referring to each employee which had.
That would be the reason, that's one of the factors that go into workers' comp rates is experience.
Got some technical knowledge you're dropping there, Raymond.
I know, I was very impressed. And using the, say LCAP and I can answer. Without having to do research, I can answer either way, but research is required when you drop acronyms I don't know. Next, I have a flow chart all the way down.
Colorful flow chart.
So, I was also asked to get some information about what the Academy Fund distribution was going to look like. And I will be perfectly honest with everyone in YouTube Landia and here in this room, that I needed a flow chart to be able to wrap my head around what this was going to look like. So, so here it is. This helped me and I hope it helps everyone here. So, essentially, we determined the Academy Fund dollar amounts and that was no easy task and I thank Charter Impact and Rachel Foy and all of our support staff, Carrie Thorette, for helping pull that information together because it was, it was a lot of tracking of, of money that had been contributed to the Academy Fund. So, after tracking all the funds, we discovered that Saddleback Valley will have forty thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars for its advisory council. If you look down, it goes to the advisory council and it'll determine how that money is spent. But before all that happens, so SOC will have twenty-two thousand eight hundred twelve dollars. That money goes into the general fund and then the advisory councils determine how they would like that money spent. And then, they submit purchase requests to the business office and the, the processes for spending funds that we typically use, getting board approval for anything over a certain dollar amount, all of those processes are, are put into play. anything over a certain dollar amount, all of those processes are put into place. And then, once those processes are followed, the money gets distributed and the items get purchased, and the schools get to enjoy the rewards of those Academy Funds.
And does that have to be purchased by June 30th of 2018? Do they need to be expended, or can they be rolled over?
Because they're general funds, I believe they can be rolled over. I think they have big plans for pretty much spending them unless they're looking at things that need renewal. So Mrs. Lynch made a great point when she was asking about or talking about, they were considering if this is something that needs to be renewed every year. Is this something, is this a wise purchase with this money?
Okay.
So. Andy would like to talk.
Originally, when I was asked to get started on this, I thought what I'd been told was that we were going to figure out how much money, and that it was going to be transferred somewhere else, and then we wouldn't have to track it anymore. That's changed in this process. And now what's happening is, there is only, there's a general fund. You can have multiple accounts in a general fund. We don't have a separate account for that anymore. So that, those monies sit in the general fund and are used by any other funds and any other money in the bank account. And they, since they're part of the OPA bank account, they were required to go through the same level of approvals and scrutiny and so on and so forth. The only part that I wanted to clarify here, they will roll over, at least that's the intent. However, because they are expended in a year, and because they go through a process, and because they represent a purchase of something and an expense of something, either call it the asphalt somebody mentioned, or dinners, or lunches, or whatever the purposes of, they're going to show up in the income statement as an expense on OPA's books. They're audited just like any other expense, because they go through the process, because they're part of the overall funds. And they're being tracked separately by like an off balance sheet, well, not off balance sheet, but basically a spreadsheet that somebody's going to keep track of, which how much money is quote "owned," but it's quote-unquote "owned" by the advisory council, and it'll show up in there. So, and yes, they roll over, but we're going to have to budget for those expenses in the same way we would budget for any other expenses next year as well.
So this isn't just the items that are rolling over from the old system to the new system? We're going to have, we're going to go through this process year after year?
Here, we, here's what happened. Let me try and simplify, or do my best. Saddleback Valley has a million dollars. I can't remember if this is true or not off the top of my head, but let's assume it is. And we've decided that Saddleback, of that million dollars, advisory council has $40,000 of that million dollars. Okay? And next year, we're going to do a budget, and that the advisory council has the right or the ability to decide how they want to spend that $40,000 at any time. And if they collect, if other monies are collected in the organization that are allocated to that $40,000, that might grow. But somebody's going to keep track of that $40,000 going up and down based upon what is being spent. But there isn't a place other than our balance sheet, which tracks our cash, which includes that $40,000 and the other 960, and our expense, our income statement that tracks expenses for the organization. And since these are kept in the general fund, and they're part of OPA, they're part of the same processes and expenses and income statement that's going to be reported, and the annual audit, that's going to look at all expenses that are incurred through the organization. So all we're doing is the advisory council is making basically advice, advisory recommendations to the organization to go spend some money on this thing that the school then is going to authorize to go spend, but it's still part of the school's financials. Was that better?
It doesn't match with what I was, what I was under the impression was happening. And let me kind of give you the picture I understood, and then maybe you can correct me.
I can probably, I mean, because I needed this flow chart to be able to understand. I needed the flow chart to be able to understand, so I might be able to answer, but Andy, stay on call. Please.
Once upon a time, the organization had the Academy Fund. And the Academy Fund was created by, controlled by, decided by, collected by, just let's keep going down that buy list, by the organization. And there was monies, $40,397, $22,812, that was still in those funds when we said, this is a bad idea. It's my understanding that once these funds are used and exhausted by the advisory councils, that the organization will not be engaging in this similar type of fundraising.
You are right.
And therefore, we will not be here again after this is addressed.
After these funds are gone, no, we don't. We do not, these are, these are monies that need to be spent, and they will be, the way they will be spent will be determined by the advisory councils. So if I were in a traditional school district, I would be calling these one-time monies. These are one-time funds. These are not coming back. Because what was going to the Academy Fund is now going to our honor society. So anyone who opted to keep.
Independent nonprofit organization, C, Schedule C, all that.
Yes. And Rachel Foy worked with our honor society presidents and treasurers to transfer those accounts. So that's all been taken care of. So we will never see Academy Fund dollars in our general fund again.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
I wasn't explaining the, or I didn't understand.
Okay.
And I didn't either. Thus, the flow chart. I'm sorry I didn't put on there one-time funds. I'll add to that.
Well, I knew, I came in understanding it was one-time funds. And that's where I needed some clarification to make sure that my original understanding of the what and the how and the why was still out. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Well, let's have some fun.
Do you have any other thing? Is that it?
Other than that, I'm ever so thankful, once again, I just, thank you.
Please.
We'll just keep that. Okay. Comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. The public, including public attending a teleconference location, are invited to address the board regarding items not listed on the agenda. No individual presentation shall be for more than three minutes, and the total time for this purpose shall not exceed 15 minutes. Ordinarily, board members will not respond to presentations, and no action can be taken. However, the board may give direction to staff following a presentation. Please turn your comment card into the board secretary prior to this agenda item. Do we have any comments?
We have three.
Three, okay.
The first up is Pam Thompson, and she did indicate that she might go to the South Orange County campus to do this. So Chase, can we see if she's over there?
Hello. Hi. Do you want the voting? Or do you not? Your act of counter. Are you going to? Okay. Hello. Are you sure? Okay. I'm just trying to hear you, Jennifer.
Can we turn up just a bit?
Hold on just a second. Can we turn up the volume?
Okay. Let me get closer. Oh, wait. Okay, is that better? I apologize. So my statement or my question today is on page 46 of 191 of the financial report. Account number 8689, other fees and contracts. So my understanding is, after speaking with Andy, I think, a month or two ago, that the Champion Village tuition payments go into that account. I am requesting that a separate line item for those income, for that income and those expenses be separate for the Orange County campus, or South Orange County, as well as the Saddleback Valley campus, because they really are two different entities. Parents that pay into Champion Village, those aren't every single student in, on the campus, and that money, I believe, should stay in Champion Village. So I would like to request that. And then I did also look, when I'm looking at this, I'm seeing a drop from September to October of almost $50,000. And so that's the thing with these, I can't, I don't know where $50,000 went. So I guess my question is, second question, I apologize, I didn't add, was that, what's the update on a financial person coming in and going over our books and with the fine tune code, with the fine tune code, and reviewing everything? So I know this is a question you can't respond to, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leonard Walker.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My whole thing is just, I want to say thank you. This is the first executive meeting that I have actually been to, and my hand is swimming. You guys got a lot going on. Thank you, really, thank you. I just want to say, OPA is like family. I have a special needs son who is at, is OPA now, and he's, this is his second year, and we have been received so well. He's like a little celebrity on campus. And it's because of the teachers, the administration, all of those that are involved, OT, it goes on and on and on. His teacher, you can feel the love. Let me say it like that. You can feel the love. And I just want to just thank everybody for that, because having a special needs son at my age is quite a challenge. But, I mean, at any age, it'd be a challenge, but, you know, I'm chasing 60, trying not to catch him, you know what I'm saying? So this six-year-old really gives me a run for the money sometimes, and it's just really great to know that I have helped building a little champion. He has the ability to learn, and they're taking the extra steps to make sure that he does. And all I can say is just thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Suzanne Lynch.
Hello. I'm back. I, again, I just wanted to say thank you to the board members for your time, and also just for, to the SOC parents, also on this side, and just for everything that's going on. And, you know, there's been so much negativity because this terrible thing happened, but I just, as Dean Lojoff was saying, parent involvement is not an issue here. And I think that's one of the best things, because we care. This school cannot go anywhere. You know, like, we are bought in, and as an educator here, you know, this is school of choice. The parents choose this place. As an educator, I want to be here. This is the place that I will work 60 hours a week for, because I believe in this program, just like the parents do. And when parents get up and talk about how their kid is thriving here, it makes me want to cry, because I'm like, we're doing it. Like, this is happening. This community is really making a difference, and it's just, it's amazing to be a part of that. Because when you go to school to be a teacher, they show you the videos of like Robin Williams like standing on the desk, being like, we will check, you know, and things. And then you get somewhere, and they're like, here's a book, teach this. But OPA doesn't do that, and especially because we're supported by the parents and our administration and you guys, who lets us decide that, you know, this kid needs to go outside and who's spelling words in the dirt, and this kid wants to write a rap song about it. And so these children are seriously thriving, and it just, I get to be the teacher that I dreamed about being. Like, you know, I have stood on a desk before, so, not now, my husband would be mad because I'm pregnant, but, you know, it's just, it's exciting to be a part of, and I just appreciate the effort and the time that you guys are putting in to dig us out and make us better and allow us to continue to do these amazing things. Okay, bye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Items for information, Charter Impact Financial Update for October of 2017.
Well, can we ask a clarifying question from that person about, she gave a page number for some report on an account?
Oh, you know what? Okay. Okay. Good, thank you.
Would you like me to?
Nope. If you know, later.
All right. I can spend as much of a little time as you'd like on this. I assume you've seen all of it. If you'd like, I can go through the summary of each page, or?
Maybe it happened before you told me. I can do, I can go through the summary of each page, or I can just answer questions if you would like. What would you like me to do?
Yeah, look quick, a summary would be great.
Summary of each page? Okay.
Yeah, just for each school.
Okay. So in your package, page two is a highlight of the whole organization. First, just to make sure it's clear, this board approved revised budget for SOC at its last meeting, based on an enrollment of 801, enrollment spelled with one L. I see. An enrollment summary, the forecast, this is about what the forecast is based on in this report. Enrollment at SOC was at 793, which was a slight increase from the prior two months, but below the current revised budgeted level of 801. For the purpose of this forecast, we're using a forecasted level of that same 793 for conservatism, and only 98% ADA. Even at that level, if that's maintained, and the attendance is higher, is what appears to be at the moment is 98.6, that would add some revenues, just to give you some sense of the conservatism built in. Similarly, at Saddleback, enrollment's at 595, which is slightly above the budgeted level. And we're using an ADA percentage, which is slightly less than what it appears to be, and also would add some money. One other point I was going, I wanted to draw attention to, there, as part of some recent audits into past year reporting of STERS and PERS prior to Charter Impact's involvement, so this is catch-up of some several years past, finally doing them correctly based upon audits. There have been some catch-up of payments, and they'll mostly be made in, at SOV, they were made in October, and at SOC, most of those payments will be made in late November or early December as we make them. However, we've already accrued the amounts into these expenses. Page four, any questions so far?
No.
Okay. Page four is just a summary of what I mentioned on SOC. The far-left table is better to focus on, just to give you, to refresh your memory about it. The right column is budget, which is budgeted 801 and a 98% attendance rate. Where we are so far is an average year-to-date of 793. That's the actual column, with an attendance rate of 98.6. And the middle column is what we're using for the purpose of the financial forecast, which is 793 and a 98% ADA. Next page, page five, is a forecast of revenues. You can see that LCFF, which is the first line, state aid revenue limit, which is the total of LCFF, there are three main components that comprise the LCFF revenue, are slightly less than the budget, because we're assuming an ADA slightly less than the budget. Overall, $31,000 expected to be below budget for the full year at this point. That number will adjust each month as we gain more information. The following, page six, is expenses. Some areas are up, some are down. Legal expenses were significantly lower than recent experience in the most recent month, which is a good sign. Hopefully, that maintains. We haven't totally lowered our forecast for that yet. But if that is sustained, then that would yield some additional favorable variances over this. But at this point, the expectation is that we will be below budget for expenses for the year, $28,000. And we believe, early on, that there's some conservatism built in. The combination of that on page seven is the fund balance, which is effectively net income. The first line is the surplus and deficit focused on the far right, which is the full year forecast. Basically, we expect at this point to be not far off of what we budgeted, not surprising because we just rebudgeted last month. By the way, one thing I want to note about this, after this, the next time I'm up in front of this board, the board later on this evening, you'll be approving the first interim report. The first interim report is, there are three separate reports that are required to your authorizer, or three primary ones. Excuse me. The first interim is based on, excuse me.
Would you like one of these?
Some water?
You have a new one?
New one.
You're so picky.
I have mine over there.
Oh, okay.
So picky. A, B, D, water. I've already been drunk.
Thank you. The first interim report is based on October financials, so you, at. The first interim report is, is based on October financials, so you, at, at, based, at the end of, like December 15th, you are required to report to the authorizer what happened through October 31st and give a projection for the full year. Our financials are basically, this set of financials is basically what that is, which is financials through October and a projection for the full year. So the first interim report that you'll be approving basically is a, just a summary of the same information you're reviewing here now in a very different format, but the same, same information. By the way, a second interim will, is done in the spring, based upon, I think it's February financials, I believe, and then there's the end-of-the-year estimate and then there's the audited financials. Excuse me.
Before you leave that, I just want to make sure that there's no accumulated depreciation in that fund balance rate. Was, was there something that has happened before? We accelerated some depreciation as a part of winding down the Chino campus?
There is, there is always accumulated depreciation, but not related to Chino in these, in these numbers.
Okay.
That's in the Chino numbers when we get to them.
Okay.
Excuse me. Page eight is the cash balance. Cash is expected to remain in a pretty narrow range, pretty, pretty closely tied to what we expected the budget to be. Again, not surprising since we're very early into that. And I had note, a note here I was going to mention, but Lisa mentioned that that included in this balance is $22,000 plus for the academy, for the advisory council. Sorry. Saddleback Valley, page 10, similar report. You'll see that the middle column, a forecast of 593 and an expected ADA of 581 is slightly higher than the budget. So if you look at page 11, a projection of revenues for the full year shows that it's slightly above budget as well. And the amount for, again, I'm focused on the far-right column, the annual forecast shows that the, the line for other local revenue, which is largely made up of the Champion Village revenue, we expect to be above budget, but that's because I believe we were conservative in our budget estimate. The only other thing to note, I have a circle on the left side here, which is that the county had been very slow to send the money for the INLU funds. We always expected we'd get them. We now did get a, a payment of 924,000 in early November, so we've now resolved that with them, but as of October 31st, it had not yet been paid. By the way, what that, when you'll see cash, you'll see cash was also very low at the end of October, but catch, catching up by November. Excuse me. Page 12, the current forecast is that expenses will be slightly above plan or $94,000 above plan. Certificated salaries are above plan, classified salaries are below plan. We still are trying to figure out, the budgeting was not as robust this year. This is the first year we got involved in it. It's not as robust as it need to be. And next year, we'll do a better job of figuring out exactly where each person goes and whether they're classified or certificated and so the, the ins and outs shouldn't be as dramatic as they are here and also there was quite a bit of change in the organization since when we budgeted until now. The fund balance on page 13 is, basically shows that we're going to be very close to the budgeted fund balance for the year. Again, things will change. We're only four months into the year, but at this point, our expectation, and again, we try to be conservative, is that we'll, we'll be at or near the expected fund balance for the end of the year. And cash on page 14 is expected at this point to be 1.3 million dollars at the end of the year. By the way, you'll notice in October that it was 441,000 and then jumping dramatically in November for the purpose payment that we just received. And what else can I tell you? Oh, and also the advisory council includes $40,000, is included in this number for the advisory council. Page 16 is Chino Valley. We've only forecasted through 1231. It assumes full payment of $200,000 of, of the restoration projects that were still to be maintained or finished before the end of that period. I have some data on that that I wanted to share with you. The current full estimate by the team is that the number to be paid for all of the Chino Valley restoration is 431,000. I didn't hear that number and see the report until this afternoon, so I spent a little bit of time looking at it. I'll need to do some more to check, but I believe that $193,000 of that has already been paid or expensed, which leaves $239,000 left to pay. So 239 is pretty close to the 200 that we've assumed in here, so I think it's a reasonable estimate. And included in that, 431 was an estimate for $110,000 for painting at Chino, which is still not confirmed. So it's possible that it might, that might, that might be less and we might not be that far off of what our assumed $200,000 more in here is. But I'll keep you posted as we hear more. We only have a few more weeks before the end of December and I don't know when the estimates will be finalized and when the work will be completed at this point. Excuse me. Back on page 16, I, our assumption is that we'll end, we ended October 31, not assumption, but we did end October 31 with 1.1 million dollars and we're estimating that we'll have $881,000 at the end of December, again, assuming that $200,000 of, of expenses for Chino.
Hey, Andy?
Yeah, sure.
Are you done, are you about, were you done with this slide or are you about ready to move on to the next one?
I was going to mention the Turner, but I don't have.
Okay, go ahead.
So I wanted to just make sure that everyone understood how we accounted for the Turner, Agassi and the Philadelphia indemnity. There were agreements signed by, with both of those entities and as you know, in October, and other than the $7,500 payment, none of those funds have flowed or affected the bank accounts of Oxford. And given the way those contracts are worded and our interpretation of GAAP, none of those funds have flown through the organization and do not show as revenue or expense or anything except the $7,500. So there's no ups and downs and ins and outs and, and nothing to be audited either because we don't, we didn't see those funds. Okay, now I'm.
So before you leave that slide.
Sure.
To the point that Raymond brought up earlier, how do we account for the issue? Should a liability arise, let's say in next year, that, that happens on the SOC or the SV campus that otherwise would have been covered by that coverage? That's going to have to get paid out of a fund. Do you access those funds that are now sitting in the Chino balance sheet?
Well, that is, that's up to this board.
So this, this is not a hard, fast accounting right now?
What we've done is a hard, fast accounting. I haven't quite finished yet.
Okay.
The way you allocate the funds that are left at Chino, you are considering as an action item in this evening or discussion item for the board. And you, this board has the ability to allocate those funds in any way it wants, including allocating some amounts to SOC and some amounts to SV if that's what it wanted to do as a means to accomplish what Raymond was saying. However, specifically, this insurance payment, we don't have a way, we can't think of a way to actually take that insurance payment and allocate it to the different schools because it was, in fact, if you read the agreements, it says, whereas the settlement was this and there was a settlement and it seems to tie them all together. We can't see how we would allocate that payment to the different schools, but you, as a board, have a way to achieve the same result by allocating funds.
So maybe this is just a hypothetical question. Let's suppose an issue, an incident were to arise on either of the SOC or the SV campus. It otherwise would have been covered by that policy and the total damages that have to be paid out, let's say, is $200,000. Is the SOC or SV campus in that situation responsible for paying that $200,000 or do we go into this fund and say, hey, had we not had to pay out that entire claim, this money would have been here and now we're going to use it to satisfy that? Or is that just purely something we would have to decide amongst ourselves, but we would have the freedom to make that decision?
When, when, when that claim happened, my, my expectation is that when that claim happened, the organization has to make a reasonable allocation of costs to its various schools. At that point, there are only two schools to allocate them, them to. Unless what this board did was, as part of its dissolution plan or closeout plan today, say, if in fact this happens at some later date, here's what we're going, how we're going to allocate those funds and therefore we might allocate them to this other pot of money that you're going to hold out here, if that's how you structure. Because you don't have to have this other pot of money ever. I mean, what, my interpretation of the resolution that potentially is on the table is that there might be a pot of money out there for purposes of a new charter or something like that and, and, but this board has the right to probably change its closeout plan or dissolution plan or distribution plan at some later date by making a vote. This is a question really for all these guys.
I was just going to say, Jerry, could we ask Jerry to opine on that? Because I'm just curious, because Raymond's point is valid. We've, we've exhausted the insurance coverage for all of our campuses, but we've not allocated that financial burden equally amongst the campuses. So I'm just curious if something were to happen, is it, how do we handle that?
So it'd be my view that if, if you needed to pay a claim, that that would be paid out of funds tied to that specific school at which the incident occurred.
So that school paid into a policy but got no benefit from it?
I, I don't know that that's accurate because over the years, each of the schools has paid into the policy and each of the schools has had claims during the time the policy was in force. So it just so happens that this particular year, one of the schools had a significant claim, but that doesn't mean that the other schools haven't benefited over time from payments they've made.
And policies have a policy year window, right? So we have coverage currently with our new policies that would cover any of these hypothetical future incidences. Is that?
I have not reviewed the policies, so I don't, but I, I understand your point. I think it's a fair question.
Because, I mean, we're talking about future hypothetical things that might happen on our two campuses, but we have insurance policies to, that for the current year and we'll have insurance policies for the next year and we'll have insurance policies for the next year. And insurance claims only really cover you for the policy period.
Albert, I'm talking about a situation where somebody had an incident occur, let's say, last year or in the prior years for which this policy was in effect, but had not yet brought a claim that has not yet been eliminated by a statute of limitations issue.
Mrs. Reyes?
We bought extended coverage covered last year.
So if something were to happen on the SOC or the SV campus?
Depending on what claim it would be, we have our DNO and our PPL, we extend it.
We have this full coverage though, that we would have had. So we did not exhaust our coverage.
The, but neither of those policies that you referenced were the policy that paid out here.
Well, Andy comes to get it.
Um, well, I'd have to have the policies in front of me, but we do have extended coverage. It would depend on what, what's going to, what the liability would be, what, what would be a claim. So.
Slip it ball would be a different claim than what this was filed.
We don't, we didn't extend workers' comp, but we do have workers' comp.
Okay.
But we did extend the policy, so we're not out of, it's covering, and it's not going to cover two years ago, but it's covering the one year with an extended from last year. 2016, 17.
So I guess what I'm asking for, for the period in which the injury occurred and our insurance covered us, if there were to be another injury or liability, they could have a claim on that policy at, that was covered by the same time, are we out of coverage?
We are not out of coverage.
Okay.
Now, we could be. It depends on, again, what the claim's going to be.
If it's the same type of claim?
If we had the same claim as.
Contract?
Mm-hmm. If we had another claim at another one of the campuses.
On our contract? I'll have to look at the policy.
I'm hoping that's not happening and I'm hoping that this is a very remote likelihood that it could happen. I'm just asking.
I, I'm, look at the, I will look at the policy and I'll let you know if we're covered that way. But we did buy extended coverage. That's why we bought it.
And the reason why it doesn't feel to me like it's, you know, so far removed is because as additional information surfaces about what was going on during that period, you know, there could be other people who don't know that they were injured at that time and say, and come forward and say, oh my gosh, I was affected by that now that I read what it says in the newspaper. So that's where that comes from.
Yeah, I, I, I understand your question and I looked at it very carefully. I can't figure out how to, for the, for proper accounting to, to allocate it, but I said, as I said, there, this board has the, has the ability to approve a, a distribution plan of the funds that are sitting at Chino and affect the same result that you're trying to get to, if that's what this board decided.
Got it. Thank you.
Let's see. There, there was a small amount of revenue that occurred in, on page 17, related to the legal expense reimbursement from CCSA. There is still some expenses going on, so year-to-date, that amount is 1.7 million and for the year, it's 2 million. By the way, to your question, Mr. Jackson, the number here, call, in under operations, which is 1.1 million dollars, includes the write-off of all those assets that occurred. Actually, we did it last month. And the resulting fund balance at this point is nearly $2 million at the Chino campus. Page 20 is, we should just talk about for just a second. Their, the cash balance at the end of October was 1.099 or 1.1 million. We estimated at the end of November that that number is 1,033,000. Today's the end of November, but we did this last week and based upon everything that comes in it, we expect that to be close. There still are a couple of revenues and funds that are expected. We've confirmed with the Special Education SLPA that they still intend to pay the last payment that was due for 1617. That number is about $77,000. We hope we get it before the end of the year, but it still could slip over. And there's also $42,000 of lottery funds that are due from the county that we also have confirmed that they will pay also at some point. So that's this $119,000 that we expect to get at some point, was an estimate. You also see the $200,000 on the far right that I just put in as a plug. It's somewhere between 2 and 250 at this point, based upon what happens there. And page 21 is the summary of that. And then there's a bunch of detail.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Okay, Gilbert and Associates July 2017 review.
Is that how that reads?
Huh?
I'm sorry. I misread the agenda. Please.
Are we good? Do you have the Gilbert Associates review?
No, Andy does.
Oh, he does.
It says my name, but Andy and I have talked about it, right?
Well, I haven't, but I go get over.
I do, so I'm so sorry.
It's all right. So Gilbert, per your hire, has, is reviewing a bunch of things.
Right.
And this report, if you've read it, is very clean. It says there are no problems on attendance or payroll or dispersments or receipts or your statements of activities or your general ledger or their review of random expenditures to make sure that we're following all the rules that you put, imposed. This is as clean a report as you could have from an independent organization.
Thank you.
Dito. That's exactly.
Just a reminder to everyone, we did hire a separate auditing firm who was state-approved. The checks, basically all of our finances every single month are internal controls. I think they pull 25 checks, is that right, from each campus? And verify all the backup information and verify that everything's being done according to how it should be done. So ever since they started looking, I think the first month, they made a few changes in our internal controls and since then, we keep coming back with clean reports. So that's very good news. And it should give our authorizers peace of mind. I know it gives this board peace of mind. Okay, so moving on, Governance Committee update. Mr. Haney, do we have an update?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jackson, do we have a Finance Committee update?
We do.
We do not.
Okay, do you have any progress on your audit committee? They're not going to have a lot of work to do, obviously, based on our audit findings, but we're.
We're just going to review all the other audits that happened.
Okay.
No, really, I'm looking for one more member.
Okay.
One more, Paul, I'm looking at you, I can see you over there.
Okay.
I second that.
I am scheduled for consent. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Items for discussion, action, approval of 201617 Oxford Preparatory Academy Financial Audit. And who is doing that presentation? Oh, hi there, Mr. Stern. I'm so glad you're here tonight.
As you know, the financial statements are audited by an independent auditor. Each year, this board is required to select an auditor each year. I think it's a, I think the date, required date is April something, March or April, something like that. So you'll come back and you'll have to purposefully select, either continuing with Kristi White and Associates or hire another independent auditor. As part of their work for the 1617 year, they review a great deal more. In fact, pretty much a great deal more sampling than, than Gilbert does on a monthly basis. They look at everything for the full year. As you know, Charter Impact took over in January, but Kristi White looked at the financial statements for the entire year, even though we took over in January. As, as you also know, for the first few months, we were cleaning up all the stuff that had happened prior to our involvement. There were some changes that were made, there were corrections that were made. And Kristi White's job at the end of that audit is to review the year-ending statements to make sure that the full year is correct and that the balance sheet balances are correct and that all of, that we're following all the state mandated rules and there are many, many, many of them that they look at. This report is the result of all that. The, the board is obligated to approve the audit prior to its submission. I think the date that it has to be sent to the county and the state is December 15. And so, so you know, this is a clean audit. If you look at page two of the audit, not page two of the papers, but page two at the bottom, at the very top, it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of Oxford Preparatory Academy as of June 30, 2017, and the changes in its net assets and its cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America," which is basically GAAP. The only other things I wanted to point out, on page 32, by the way, all rest, the rest of all this is the financial statements. I'm happy to go through anything if you like, but page 32 is where they list all of the, any audit findings or deficiencies they find in the financial statements. And their statement here is, "There were no audit findings related to the financial statements during 1617." That's what you want to see. On page 31, which is the page right before that, they list at the top part, what I just basically said was, "Do they find anything in the financial statements that were to be modified or corrections or deficiencies or weaknesses? None, none, none." And then they're obligated to look at all funding streams. And the way funding works at the federal and state level is even being off by a dollar, you are out of compliance, so you are obligated to follow all the rules and report all the compliance and for every single dollar that's provided by the state. In this particular case, they found a weakness and a deficiency. They, basically, the summary of that deficiency and weakness is that there were three students that they, that were counted as English language learners that shouldn't have been. The financial impact is $810 for the year, so a very small number, but there are no materiality issues related to funding issues. And Dr. Hall has drafted and it's reflected in here, what your corrective action plan is to make sure that doesn't happen again. This is all following normal and standard procedures for how this has to be handled. But, and I'll let her talk to that if you have any questions about it, but you should be very proud, this is a, especially given the FICMAT report and all the stuff that happened in the past year. This is as clean a report as I would, as you could expect.
And I, I want to thank the staff, the board and the previous board for all the hard work that went into this past year. What a difference a year makes. This looks nothing like our audit from, from last year. This looks, all the things that have been corrected in the FICMAT report, it's, it's taken a lot of hard work and a lot of meetings, as you all know. Hopefully, that's a thing of the past as well. So Charter Impact, thank you so much. You really played a leadership role in helping us to get everything turned around. I'll remind everyone, when we came on board, Albert in October and myself in January, we didn't even have access to all of our bank accounts. So every meeting, I would come back in and wondering when the other shoe was going to fall. You know, are we broke? And they would keep saying, well, no, you have money. And it was just, you poor guy, I was all over you. And it wasn't until March I started to sleep at night again and saying, gosh, you know, we do have money, but we have a lot of problems that we need to correct and, and this is the result of the efforts of a lot of people. And the parents hanging in there with us as we, as we made all the corrections. So, so thank you as well, but thank you, Andy. Okay, so if there's no questions, can I ask for a motion to approve the financial audit for 2016-2017?
I'll second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes. Excellent. Okay, moving on to number two, Board Resolution 2017-013 Distribution Plan for remaining unrestricted assets of Oxford Preparatory Academy Chino Valley Charter School. Oxford Preparatory Academy Chino Valley Charter School closed effective July 24, 2017. The former school's charter states that upon closure, "All unrestricted and unused assets remain the sole property of Oxford Preparatory Academy and shall be distributed in accordance with the distribution plan adopted by the Oxford Preparatory Academy Board of Directors." Board Resolution 2017-013 constitutes the Oxford Preparatory Academy Chino Valley Charter School Distribution Plan as part of the school's financial closeout. And as you can see, we have quite a, we have a little bit of a presentation there, but I also have a comment.
You have one speaker on this item.
So let's do this, now that I've read that into the record, let's go ahead and bring up the speaker.
Karen Leeds.
I'll be quick. My question regards to this is when we were discussing some of the closure items that were at Chino Valley campus, as an Honor Society president, I was offered that some of those things would be able to be, able to come down to the SOC campus. And then when it came down to it, they were saying that we needed to pay over $40,000 for some of those things. So my question is, now that it seems that SOC will be paying some of those things left in, to be paid as it, as we just went over. I'm not sure I understand all of it correctly, maybe that's for another time. But as it relates to these items that are there, will SOC and SV have access to and be given the first choice of the things that are in the storage bin that are left up at Chino Valley? And how does that work or what does that look like for us to get those if they're Chino Valley, or excuse me, OPA items? Does that make sense?
I understand.
Okay. There's just a lot of things up there and I think SV and SOC maybe could go out there together and see what would be beneficial to both campuses or how they're going to go about doing those distributions.
So the distribution plan in front of you has draft across it for a reason. So this was created in concert with council and things were left highlighted to allow for open discussion out here in open session. And I have asked Mr. Hedman and Mr. Simmons to join me up here because they both have very thorough knowledge of closing procedures and, and what a dispersment plan can and should look like. So we already have some suggestions for the board to consider. So with that being said, I would like to know how the board would like to proceed. Would you like to start with questions you have, comments you have? Would you like us to start with the recommendations we now have?
Sure.
Moving forward?
Okay, so I'll let the gentleman take his point.
So, so we, I'd like to recommend that the board consider an amendment to a portion of the highlighted text, which is in Section 2 on the resolved clause. And it would be to delete the language that is in Section 2C that exists now and replace it with the following text. "To pay costs associated with reopening and operating the OPA-Chino campus if the Oxford Preparatory Academy is successful in the above referenced litigation." And that referring back to the litigation that's referenced in Section 2B immediately prior. And then, to, to B. And then my suggestion for the board's consideration is that if you were to get through Sections 2A, 2B, and 2C, that we provide a catch-all of sorts. And that would be to replace the language in D instead by saying, "For any lawful purpose pursuant to a future resolution duly adopted by the Oxford Preparatory Board of Directors." And I'm happy to give a brief explanation for that language if you'd like. Or I, I think basically, the goal of this being to provide clarity that the provision in Section 2C is about a reopening of the campus and that the language in D is that we would come back to you with a staff recommendation in the event that there were funds left after 2A, 2B, and 2C. If there was still something left at the end of that, that would come back to the board, which would not preclude the possibility of the board having a conversation along the lines of this initial recommendation. But it would, it would require some further discussion by the board to take into consideration a lot of the issues that you guys have been raising tonight about a lot of what-if scenarios that we don't necessarily know the answers to, all of those what-if scenarios at this point.
And can you discuss why you want to change the language in C?
So my suggestion is that the, the language, without getting into any of the litigation issues that are currently pending. The, the language in C, I think, would be most appropriate as a reopening of the OPA-Chino campus because these funds were generated by the OPA-Chino campus. And so the thinking there being that if you're successful in that litigation, you would then need funds to actually reopen that campus. And if you've spent that money, then that would put you in a difficult scenario if you won the litigation and then had no funds to actually reopen the campus.
And then what would be the, your concern about leaving C, but also adding for the benefit of students in Chino are providing the pursuit of a new charter? Because I see you're taking out that language?
Right, so my concern about that is that if you seek a new charter, that would have a new charter number assigned to it, so it would technically be a new school. And in that case, I'm, I'm concerned that I would want to make sure that the funds that were generated by the OPA-Chino campus are related to that. Expenditures of those funds are directly tied to the reopening of that campus as opposed to a new one. And, you know, I could certainly provide some additional opinion on that to the board, but I think it would be most appropriate to do that in, in the confines of an attorney-client privileged communication.
Okay. Because we did get a recommendation that this here is within the, what's the word that I want? That the law does provide for this in a dispersment plan? Is it a matter of interpretation between attorneys or?
I, I think reasonable minds could differ.
Okay.
Your, your closeout language in your existing charter does provide that the funds could be distributed to a charter school as one of the possible distributions.
Correct.
But I think reasonable minds could differ about, about that in light of some other legal issues that are, that are not part of your charter language.
For the new language you proposed for C, could we change it so that for its reopening of the Chino campus, if the appeal is successful and the board authorizes reopening?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, they're approved by the Oxford Prep Board of Directors.
I just didn't have the written, the new language that he proposed.
Is there a way for us to amend B so that we can say, litigation with an expense not to exceed a certain number?
That is at the pleasure of the board.
Well, I would think that you're not going to exceed the amount that is in that fund. Would that be accurate? I mean.
Could we take a vote on that?
I guess I don't understand.
Well, I get worried because Andy, and I love Andy, and he reminds me often that we're one, that it's, look, it's like the left pocket and the right pocket of the same person. So your money's all on the same person. And so, but, so I get worried that if we, we don't cap things and we don't put time limits on things, that it can, I would just like to see a number on there. I'd be more.
I don't know how you put a number because it's going to be diminishing as we go through closing activities, as we go through legal fees.
I'm saying the, the appeal not to exceed, that we're not going to spend more than whatever amount of money on the appeal.
I would, I would just add that is an action the board could take, but that implicates issues that are, again, more appropriate for the confines of the attorney-client privilege in a closed session setting.
Do you mean not letting the other guy know what you're, when you're going to stop spending money? He knows you just spend you up to that point and then you stop. As an example.
There are a number of concerns.
So we can't put a, can't put a limit on it?
Well, we could do it in closed session. If we did it in closed session, we would, would that be announced publicly? So we would be telling the opponents what our legal budget is.
I would state that this discussion in its current form is a closed session discussion. So I would ask, I would recommend that the board defer this discussion to a closed session attorney-client privileged setting.
So even just discussing whether you set a budget is a closed session item?
Yes, in my opinion it is.
So do we motion to move to closed session to have this conversation?
At the pleasure of the board.
Then I motion that we move to closed session so we can have an open discussion about this and then report back out.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, let's move to closed session. Closed session starting out. Closed session starting at what time?
Nine fifty-five.
What is it?
Nine fifty-five.
Gentlemen, thank you for your patience. We are returning from closed session at ten fifty-six. We are discussing the board resolution two thousand seventeen dash oh-one-three distribution plan for remaining unrestricted assets of Oxford Preparatory Academy-Chino Valley Charter School. Mr. Simmons has read a revision into the record. Before I ask for motion, are there any other revisions that the board would like? Okay, then may I please have a motion?
Can we have him read it one more time?
Sure. Revisions to B, I mean to C and D.
Right, there are no revisions to section two B. Section C would be deleted and replaced with the following. Quote, "To pay costs associated with reopening the Opecino campus if Oxford Preparatory Academy is successful in the above referenced litigation and the expenses are approved by the Opa Board of Directors." And D would be deleted and replaced with, "For any lawful purpose pursuant to a future resolution duly adopted by the Oxford Preparatory Board of Directors."
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
One second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is carried. Number three, approval of two oh-one-seven dash two oh-one-eight, the two thousand seventeen-eighteen first interim financial report for Oxford Preparatory Academy, South Orange County pursuant to education code four seven six oh-four dot three-three. All California charter schools are required to approve a first interim financial report by December fifteenth of each year that includes a projection of the upcoming year and two subsequent years and reflects changes, shows year-to-date actual revenues and expenditures through October thirty-first. Mr. Stern?
Still here.
Thank you.
So, as you know, or as I mentioned before, you've reviewed, or we talked about the financials for October. The first interim is basically the same information through October and a projection through the end of the year plus two more years. The, however, in a very different format that combines many other categories, a lot of the categories that we provide for you are in very summarized form. I will note that it is not exactly the same. The, it is a thousand dollars different on the revenue. We provided this report last week. And then as part of putting the first interim together, we have to go through a complex spreadsheet that the state provides to calculate the projection for LCFF, and we found a thousand-dollar error. So a thousand dollars out of five point nine million dollars, I'm just letting you know, it's a thousand dollars more that we're telling the county than I provided to you. That was only for SOC for, and when we get to Saddleback, it's exactly the same information.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the interim report for South Orange County?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Just to let you know, for those of you who were not around this time last year, we lost a CFO in the middle of all this, as well as almost an entire administrative team, and we had incomplete interims. So again, what a difference a year makes. This is very exciting. And so thank you again, Andy, for all of your hard work. Okay, approval of two thousand seventeen-eighteen first interim financial report for Oxford Preparatory Academy-Saddleback Valley. Again, pursuant to education code section four seven six oh-four dot three-three, all California charter schools are required to approve a first interim financial report by December fifteenth of each year that includes a projection of the upcoming year and two subsequent years and reflects changes, shows year-to-date actual revenues and expenditures through October thirty-first. Mr. Stern?
I have nothing further to add.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Stern, before, is this your last item?
I hope so.
Oh, you hope so. I, I...
I'm not leaving them.
Right, keep in mind that these are due on December fifteenth. We're, we're going dark in December for the holidays. We did not want to have to have a special meeting. So we really leaned on Mr. Stern and his staff to please, please, please get this to us in time for tonight's meeting. And please thank everyone at Charter Impact.
You got it. Thank you.
Same with the audit, Kristy White. They, they had to get theirs in early as well. So we appreciate all of your hard efforts. Moving on to number five, conflict of interest policy implementing the requirements of government code section ten ninety. Pursuant to the recently approved MOU with Orange County Board of Education, Oxford Preparatory Academy is required to adopt a conflict of interest policy implementing the requirements of government code section ten ninety. Recommend that the board directors, directors approve a conflict of interest policy implementing the requirements of government code section ten ninety. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
When do we have discussion?
After, after I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Now we can have discussion. Is there any discussion?
Do we already have a conflict of interest policy?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. This is in response to a request from the Orange County Department of Education related specifically to ten ninety.
So we have a conflict of interest policy now, and we also have a conflict of interest policy with specific consideration to this? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Number six, approve a contract with executive search agency for nationwide executive director search. At the October twenty-six, two thousand seventeen Board of Directors meeting, the board directed interim managing director, Dr. Lisa Hall, to obtain bids for executive search agencies to lead a search for a new executive director, Dr. Hall.
So in your packet before this evening, you received one proposal, and that is not my typical style. I would not normally bring before you one option. That was not my intent. Then today, at four forty, I received the additional information that has been provided to you. So you got additional information about a Carney, Sando, and Associates, and you got additional information about Leadership Associates. And then you got a table that includes additional search firms. I do want to note that on the list of additional search firms, the COSCA group no longer works with charter schools. So it is listed on your table as a potential educational executive search firm. Because we are a charter school, it is not a potential. And in addition to that, you have Ray and Associates on this table. And Ray and Associates no longer works with organizations or schools or districts with less than eighteen hundred students. So they too are not a potential.
Right, they had made an offer back in, like, April of last year, but that's when we had three campuses and we had like twenty-five hundred students, so that's the difference. Regarding leadership, did they say who their consultant would be?
On the table, it indicates that Dennis Smith is the primary contact. That does not necessarily mean that Dennis Smith would lead the search.
Or do they give us some options as to whether or not we can request someone? Did we have that discussion?
We can certainly request someone, whether or not they grant our request.
Right, and he's in Orange County.
He is in Orange County, former superintendent.
Yeah.
Central York, Belinda.
Is he looking for an interim?
Right, I, believe me, the question's been posed.
Okay. Okay. The monetary difference between the two?
So, leadership and associates begins at eighteen thousand dollars and can go up to twenty-one thousand five hundred, depending on the services. And you do have a list of, of services that they offer. So there, it's a little bit like a menu. So you can choose to have services and not have services. And then the proposal that you received in advance from McPherson and Jacobson has, has just a flat rate, and it lists everything that is included. And although their primary office is not here in California, they have done a number of searches for California districts, and those are listed in, in the back on, beginning on page twenty-nine. So many of their searches are currently seated superintendents in California districts.
One of the things about the McPherson-Jacobson that had me concerned is I didn't see much of an Orange County presence, which really concerned me.
Sure.
Also, I didn't see much, I, I think we would probably be their first charter client. At least that was, I, I thought that I was picking up. And I had both of those concerns. However, at the same time, I really, I've never seen phase five offered for a search firm to their client, and that is facilitate board and executive directors identification of two to three performance objectives and evidence of progress the board will accept. And then the consultant reviews executive director's plan. That's really going the extra mile and staying in touch with us after there's a placement. Do either one of these make any kind of a guarantee that if you go through the process, you select someone and you aren't happy? I mean...
No.
There are no guarantees. I thought that one of them, I thought that McPherson...
Oh, I'm sorry.
McPherson does.
I apologize. So when you say guarantee...
No, we, we're not going to turn it back in and ask for a refund, but I think that's...
I'm sorry, that's how I heard it.
Go through another search for you?
Yes, at no cost. That's what I...
Yes, he is correct. I'm sorry, I thought you meant you, without a receipt, you wanted to return.
Okay.
To Nordstrom.
But you've already opened the packet.
Okay. So, so we have two before us, and again, the other one came in late, and I know that came in late. In looking, I mean, it came...
It came at four forty to me, and I printed it so that it wouldn't be available to you.
And in looking at search firms back in March, April, leadership is actually, has quite a reputation in California, don't they?
Yes, they do.
That's what I thought.
They do. And so...
I'm familiar with Dennis Smith.
Uh-huh.
He has a, he has a stellar reputation.
Right.
I'm not familiar with any of them.
Well, I will be honest and tell you that I was surprised at the price range.
For both, yeah?
For Leadership Associates, because they are so well-known and they are so widely used in California, I really expected the dollar amount to be higher.
Me too.
Sorry.
Don't tell them.
Now it's off record.
I'm, I'm, was, I was pleasantly surprised to see that the dollar amount was eighteen thousand to twenty-one, to twenty-one five. So, never mind, I wasn't surprised.
Right? If we used all their services?
If we, if we took the, if we took the...
Their entire package?
If we took the entire package, if we took the top-of-the-line Mercedes model, we would pay twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
Wow, that's expensive.
I agree. I agree that it's expensive, but it's less expensive than it could have been, such as the one K-12 search group who would be happy to do this for us for fifty thousand dollars. Yikes.
Carney, Sando, thirty to forty.
Right. Right.
All right.
They're not the lowest.
So you make your own recommendation?
My recommendation is between the two. I understand Ms. Garner's concern that McPherson and Jacobson has not worked with a lot of charter schools. However, I don't have information from Leadership Associates as to how many charter schools they have worked with to date. This may be a new venture for them.
However, I think they also have a very strong pool of candidates for leadership that they're pulling in for superintendents, assistant associate superintendents, so I...
Oh, they're widely used in, in traditional districts. Absolutely. I'm, I do not negate their wide use.
Right, right.
I just can't speak to their experience with charters.
Exactly. But I'm just saying their applicant pool, I think, is probably pretty robust. And I think they also have a lot of good experience recruiting.
I'm sure they do.
So you're recommending Leadership and Associates?
I am not necessarily recommending Leadership and Associates, but I do think that they're a very good choice. I think that we need to talk about cost. If, if, if cost is a concern, the entire package for McPherson and Jacobson is, is just under fifteen thousand dollars. So there's a cost saving there.
Right, so there's about a seven thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. And...
But in the grand scheme of things, that's pretty insignificant, though, right?
I think, based on what we're doing here and who we're looking for, I would say that is.
Is there any material reason to account for the difference between Carney and Leadership Associates?
I can't speak to that. I would, I, I could venture to guess, but I don't want to be on record as venturing to guess.
I was just wondering if there was something that you'd know when...
Just, they have a, they have, well, as Ms. Garner said, they have access to a lot of highly qualified candidates, and the people that work for them are typically former superintendents. And, and they're, and they're very well-known as superintendents, former superintendents from California. So the disadvantage, I believe, in looking at McPherson and Jacobson is that while their support, they're backed by the California School Boards Association, which is why you don't see a lot of charter information in there, they may not have the same pool or the same level of experience with California schools that Leadership and Associates would have.
They would be doing more of a, I guess, their pool would be a national pool, per se, more so than...
A California pool?
Or at least, more so in Orange County.
That's entirely possible. They do have California, they, they have California representatives. So I guess a way to compare them is, is sort of like a, a sales company that has representatives in, in different states. So they, they have someone who specializes in working in California. So really, for the board's consideration, I, I present Leadership Associates and McPherson and Jacobson. And really, our difference there is cost. And if seven thousand dollars is, is in a small amount in considering the person, the very important role or filling, what I don't know is whether or not there's a return guarantee for Leadership and Associates. I apologize if I am being a little...
You mean like if we don't like them, we can take them back?
If we don't like them, they do another search for us. That I, that I don't know.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
So can I make a motion for, to approve Leadership and Associates?
Yes, you can.
I'd like to do that.
Okay. Have a motion to approve contracting with Leadership, Leadership Associates for a nationwide executive director search. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I just want to find out if there's the, the...
The exchange policy.
Right.
We'll call it the exchange policy.
Exactly.
That's very unusual to see that, by the way.
Well, no, they usually have...
I see it all the time.
Yeah, ninety-day refill. Some, you can negotiate, no, really.
No, 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 but in education, I haven't seen that very...
They call it a ninety-day refill?
Yeah, it's a ninety-day refill. They'll, they'll refill the position.
Sounded like your mail-in prescription.
No. You can negotiate that to one hundred and twenty days. Pretty please try to do that.
I will do my darndest. I, I just wanted to see if we were seeing it anywhere in the documentation that we have right now, and I'm not seeing it.
I know that basically that McPherson had a additional stage.
Yes, they, they called that.
...interview transition, and page sixteen on theirs was provide the guarantee. Provide a guarantee.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion to approve Leadership Associates for a nationwide executive director search. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Anybody abstaining?
I'm abstaining until, like, we get a decision, I mean.
Until you get an answer on the exchange policy?
Yeah, I guess my follow-up question would be is how often would you, in education, do you bring someone in as a result of an educate, as a, of one of these searches and then conclude that this was not right?
Um, I don't know that it happens often, but I do know of a few instances.
And, uh, I hate to go back to the past, but if your name is Sue Roach, it can certainly happen. And that happened with a search firm that we dealt with and didn't wanna deal with us ag- again because of that, so.
But it's the way she did it, not that she was.
Exactly. Exactly.
They described a very interesting way she did it.
Yes. So, Mr. Haney, where is your vote going?
Are you on the leadership associates website?
I'm trying to see if there's information on there.
I looked, I didn't see it.
You didn't see it?
Mm-mm.
I'm looking at their flow chart. That was the one they gave us.
Assist the board and staff.
Is it a district contract?
So they do assist with the communication plan, um, and other activities to support the approval of the new executive, executive director's contract. They are available to provide additional follow-up services as desired, so I'm guessing that if I called them tomorrow and asked if we could get similar language to McPherson and Jacobson.
Then I'd be on board.
The worst thing they could say is no.
Right.
And then you would be an abstention or, uh, I'm.
Can you conditionally vote?
It's a.
Can you conditionally vote and say, well, she calls him and he says that, I'm yay and she does?
No, there, there could be a motion with a condition, but.
Okay, so I have three votes?
I'll vote yes.
Okay, I have four votes, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Haney.
But still hit him up.
Yeah, she's still, see what you can do.
I'm sure they were watching in YouTube land and now they know.
They know. They're all going another one.
Okay, motion carries, Jennifer.
Got it.
Okay. Number seven, consideration and potential adoption of a plan to fill board vacancy. Uh, the board is in the process of filling the board vacancy. The purpose of this item is to allow the board directors to discuss the process for recruitment of a, of a new board member. Um, recommend the board of directors directly under managing director to assist the nominating committee with the identification of the qualities of a board member to fill the board vacancy. Do we have anyone speaking on this item?
Mr. Natura, you already spoke during your part, I didn't know if you wanted to come up again.
Oh, you slipped that in, yes you did. Okay. Okay, so we're good.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, can I have a motion to direct the interim managing director to assist the nominating committee with the identification of the qualities of a board member to fill the board vacancy?
I'll motion.
Okay.
Wait a minute, say that again?
Well, I just read right here.
It's late.
Direct the interim, it's getting late.
And I'll second.
Direct the interim managing director to assist the nominating committee with the identification of the qualities of a board member to fill the board vacancy. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second, discussion.
Can we amend that to say by when?
When we make our motion, we can.
We just made the motion?
Uh-oh.
You made, they made the motion and you said yes to it with no date.
I thought I was just moving to discussion.
Oh, got it. So I would like to amend that to say, you know, that we're gonna, with the expectation that this seat is gonna be filled by a certain day.
The January meeting.
There you go. Perfect.
Well.
That's not how it works.
That's not how it works.
Just procedurally.
Yeah. Procedurally, you'll, we'll need to, much like what we did with you, uh, we will, we within, the nominating committee, if they had people to nominate, they would do it at a meeting and then at the following meeting, according to our bylaws, we would vote. So this is to, um, and I think it's dangerous to lock yourself into a timetable here because, um, if there's any recruitment that's going to be involved, there's no guarantee as to, and I guess I would just bring us back to here, but this is really to start the process of the nominating committee doing their work and identifying the qualities that we're looking for. So this isn't about filling the position, we're not talking about that timetable. We're really talking about having, uh, Dr. Hall sit with the nominating committee to discuss what we're looking for.
We already asked for candidates and closed the.
Recruiting.
Closed the recruiting for candidates, saying, hey, you gotta get your application in by a certain day and then closed it. So I feel like we've already got a bucket of candidates.
Well, we may not have all the candidates that we're looking for and that's what we're trying to determine here.
But that feels like those people who rushed to put their name in based on the date that we gave them and then we turned around and said, we don't have the right people, for what reason?
Well, that's always possible, Mr. Jackson.
Well, but then why wouldn't it be possible again in February or be possible in March? Or May or April?
Mr. Deas?
Well, when I saw this item on the agenda, I, I was confused. I'm like, why would there be an item when the ad hoc committee hadn't, hadn't even had a single meeting? Um, effective boards collaborate, they build a consensus, they move in alignment. Um, on nine twenty-eight, near the beginning of a meeting, before there was a vice chair nomination, before the governance committee chair was filled, bef- um, and a month before the ad hoc committee was formed, an announcement was made on what the process was going to be. I mean, it was a month before the creation of the ad hoc committee. When the ad hoc committee is created, it then meets and determines the process. It then meets and determines the, the qualifications. It comes together and creates all that as part of its job. Um, so to have made the announcement and start doing the candidates and so on and so forth, um, a month before the formation of the ad hoc committee seems a little, seems a little off. So that would be my, you know, first objection. And it's not to say that when we look at the candidate pool, we may not find it, but it's saying that we put the cart before the horse. The, there was no, the.
Didn't we unanimously vote to add a fifth member?
Okay. So, but the process of what, the process we were going to take to add a member is something that the ad hoc committee would collaborate on and move forward with. To announce the process before the formation of the ad hoc committee. Board members have no individual authority, they only have authority which is given to them by the board to act on behalf of the board and according to the agreement of the board, it's, it's not, you can't just announce a process that a committee that hasn't been formed is expected to follow. That's not proper board procedure.
Why can't the board say, we're taking applications and then we will have a nominating committee that will sort through them, select, interview and bring a recommendation? Why, I don't, I don't see how materially.
Because the board didn't even vote on that. There was no board vote on.
But there was a vote to add a member.
Right? That, and that's not in dispute.
Okay, then why, then the authority was there.
To add a member, but not to select the process and I, the most important job.
This isn't like bringing supplies to D-Day.
But the mo- the most important job that we have as a board is to select an E.D.
I know, I've gotten that exact same sentence in an email from both of you.
I understand, and you didn't respond to it.
Because it was clear no one was gonna proceed.
Okay, on, and I, I can't, I thought we would have this conversation as part of our committee process, okay? But, okay, so nine twenty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
You announced the process before any, any other, any committees were formed, any authority was provided.
But why'd you vote for it if I was wrong?
Wait, I didn't vote for the process. I am in total agreement that we need to move forward, that the ad hoc committee needs to meet, discuss and move forward with the selection of, we're not in disagreement there. We're absolutely in, in alignment there. You've just unilaterally chosen the process and then, so that was nine eight, you made the announcement of how it was going to work. On ten-six, the committee was formed. On eleven-one, you emailed me and said, hey, we already have, hey, I've got the candidates, we're reviewing them, I've got some strong ones, pick your top six. Two days later, I asked to meet, to discuss, um, hey, let's do this, and I gave you three dates in the very next week that we can move forward. Okay? Four days later, you said, hey, let's just have a phone call instead. Three days after that, I hadn't had a chance to respond yet. You said it was taking too long. You said, hey, I'm the chairman of the governments committee and I need you to give me those list by Monday or I will move forward without you. That's not the way it works. But ninety minutes later, instead of going through all the above or lecturing you on protocol or explaining to you that the chairman of the committee.
Which I appreciate you saving till tonight to do.
Well, but you brought it aboard, you brought it here tonight, we've already approved to have this conversation and you wanna argue the protocol.
I don't wanna argue protocol.
I kinda do.
I think before we ever sit down to start our interviews, it's no different than when we are, are interviewing our executive director, we know exactly what we're looking for before we even start the interview process. I think what we're hearing here is that we wanna decide what exactly are we looking for, then we can start the interview process. I mean, that just makes sense. The second most important decision that we make is selecting a, a member of the board of directors, the first is an executive director. I think they both deserve the same process, of first identifying, what are we looking for and then doing our interviews and saying, do we have the candidate that matches up with what we're looking for? To me, that's very reasonable.
But also what's reasonable, I think, is that we as a board, we were at full stride. We already had conducted interviews, we already had, uh, the process nailed down.
When?
When you picked Joseph.
That was, but that was, that was a process that was nailed down by the previous ad hoc committee. This is a new ad hoc committee.
So it's new board member requirements?
Why not? I mean, you, you look at the makeup of the board and you said, what does the board need now today? What skills do we wanna bring? What qualifications do we wanna bring? How does, what kind of board member fits within the makeup of the existing four?
And we can't have that conversation in the context of looking at the resumes we have?
We could, but we never, we never got a chance to have that conversation, you and I.
Was this now the time where I get to read your emails?
Go for it, if you'd like.
Because, I mean, you, 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 you take selective excerpts from my emails.
I abbreviated, yes, I did, because I didn't have to sit there.
And read the dramatic flair.
Okay, sure.
But there is a, um, I got a terse email back from you.
Okay.
There is an option under the education code to have an additional board member.
You know something, Mr. Haney?
Yes, Ms. Garner.
We act as a board.
Sandra, can you speak into the microphone pretty please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. So the point is, is that we're a board, we have no authority outside of being a board, so it's improper for you to sit here and say, I'm going to go to our authorizers, that's, that's, that's not proper. If we need to go to our authorizers, the board will go to our authorizers.
Or the parents.
That's proper.
And aft- and we do so after exceeding every effort.
Right, let's go through the process.
There has, where, show me where a collaborative process has been initiated. It has, it doesn't occur yet. And so, the agenda item was to move forward on the collaborative process. Why are you against that?
I'm not against it.
Then let's go, then let's approve it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a little bit of a discussion.
Okay.
So it seems like, like I was saying, we already had the rhythm when you guys picked Joseph.
That was a different board.
I get it, and there was a different, so why right away didn't we have, instead of forming the committee one month and instead of doing something another month and instead of, and this is the casualness.
This isn't casual.
No, I'm just saying, this is my, this is Raymond's opinion. I just feel like it's moving artificially slow. So this month, we're gonna form a committee, but for what?
We have a committee.
No, we already formed a committee.
Right.
But my question for you, I mean, we're all lucid grownups here. We formed a committee, for what purpose? Just to kick the can down the road for thirty days? Just because in, the committee can't do anything because the committee hasn't discussed whatever the criteria are and now we're all back to another month, another board meeting talking about, now let's decide what it is that we're looking for. And I just feel like all this stuff can happen either concurrently or in rapid succession, it doesn't have to happen, all right, I'm, you know, that we make a motion to form a committee. And I get excited about that 'cause I'm naive and I think, man, this means we're gonna get a fifth board member, it'll be awesome. But really, that doesn't mean that at all, it just means that we're gonna postpone the inevitable for thirty to.
It takes time, just like you forming an audit committee.
Uh-huh.
We thought that that would be done sixty days ago, but it takes time, things take time to do it the right way. All we're saying is let's do this the right way, that's all.
No, you're not saying let's do it the right way, you're let's, you're saying, let's do it the slow way.
No.
I'm saying we can do it right and we can do it expediently. And that can happen not by forming a committee that is, that is inert. I know, we already, for what? What did we even form it for?
For the committee to get together.
And did they?
The committee to get together, no.
Why not?
I don't know, I offered him three dates and he didn't offer any counter dates and then just went dark. So, we're bringing our.
If I may interject, the, the, my, I envision my role here as to help facilitate the process so that we can move through this and we can get someone in place as expediently as possible. So my role would be as facilitator to help come together, to get dates where, where they meet and get this taken care of in the interest of moving forward. So that is why the agenda item is presented in the way that it is because I agree, it is an important task.
So we all agree it's important, we all wanna do it right, so I'm, all I'm saying is let's put a date on it.
And I understand your.
Got it.
And so that's a board decision, I just wanted to interject and ensure that my, I just wanna make sure that everyone's clear that it's on there so that I can help facilitate the process so that we can actually move forward with the process and get it done.
And that gives me a great deal of peace, by the way, to hear you say that, I, that means a lot.
Likewise.
I'd still like a date on it. Do I make a motion for a date? Is that how this works?
You'd have to ask the, uh, the person who made the motion if they would be willing to accept a date.
Joseph, you made the motion, would you be willing to accept a date?
I would gladly accept a date.
So would you like to discuss what that date might be?
May I interject?
Please.
Okay. So, um, we do have the Orange County Department of Education representative here today, so, um, if we, if, with your first suggestion, did you make a suggestion? You wanted a date, but you didn't say a date.
I think I said, I said January excitedly.
Okay, so that would require a special meeting because we would need to meet the candidates before they could be placed. And I don't know that that meets the requirements of a.
Would require a change in our bylaws in terms of the steps we need to take.
So that's where I think we could.
I thought if we had a special meeting, that would still give you the seven days necessary to do that. How, how would that require a bylaw change?
You have to have a meeting to present the candidates.
Mm-hmm.
Then the board as a whole, um, makes a decision on the candidates that are being presented.
Right, so we do a special meeting before the board meeting and then on the board meeting they get installed just like Joseph did.
They do.
And they can participate. No bylaw, no bylaw revision necessary.
Or we could wait until the February meeting, in which case that takes us out to February. So those are, those are two options that the board can consider and I, and I'm sorry, I, I just am presenting the options because it's important for the board to consider what the options are. Um, so again, I would simply be the keeper of the, of the process and, um, and so those those are a couple of options to consider.
Perfect, so, so normally I would say, January right away, all the way. Uh, say that again, Sandra.
I, I was asking Jennifer when our February meeting is.
I would say January, every day, all day, right away, but, uh, but I, I don't know what, how many candidates you have. How many candidates do you have?
Oh, so it's February 2nd?
January, February twenty second is our February meeting.
What we could do is put, direct the managing director to assist the nominating committee with the identification of the qualities of the board member to fill the board vacancy by February twenty second, two thousand and eighteen. But then you have to have a co, what happens if we don't? What happens if, if we're not able to agree on a candidate? That's why I don't want to put a date on there.
Then you write me up, because I was-
Right.
She just said-
We're bypassing the process.
Of?
Because we're somehow, we have come to the conclusion that we are in this, that we have to rush it. Why? Well, yes, we could have already had the, the ad hoc committee. We could have already met, that could have happened in November.
We do have a committee.
If we change the phrasing to, I'm sorry, I just interjected without asking if it was okay, and I apologize for that, but if we change the language to say, um, something to the effect of, with the, with the expect- Yes, the goal, with the goal.
Sure.
And, and as the keeper of the process, I would do everything I could to help facilitate that.
So, what I heard, uh, when I talk about dates, the January date or the February date, I mean of getting a board member installed. I don't mean of February, of getting a description of what we'd like to see the characteristics of, of a board member.
I understood that.
Right, no, 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 when I read this, I said, fill the vacancy, the board vacancy, we could add with the goal by February twenty second, two thousand and eighteen.
To present, uh, to the board, to the candidates, or to seat the candidate, because now we're talking about a special meeting.
Presenting would be on, in January, is my thought. And then there would be seating on February, if you agree to this February date.
We're saying that we are in such a hurry, this needs to happen, so, um, that we're having a board discussion. Um, that we need to, this is so critical, that less than thirty days after the, a letter from our authorizers highly encouraging us not to have any special meetings, we're sitting here having a conversation about a special meeting.
Because the covenants committee can't meet on its own yet, or hasn't done it yet.
Hasn't done it yet.
The nominating committee.
Oh, sorry, then, sorry about that, yeah.
And that's really a board decision, I just, um, I would like to reiterate that I will help facilitate the process and support whatever the board decides, and, um, and do everything I possibly can to, um, ensure that if we have a goal by date, that we work toward meeting that goal by date.
So, it's the, for all practical purposes, the beginning of December, right? So if we-
It will be in twenty-one minutes.
And so if we say the January day is when we're gonna, when you guys will have until the January meeting to meet with them, talk to them.
Narrow it down to what, three and?
Yep, and then they get, uh, recommended, presented at the February meeting, which is-
They would get presented as, here they are, everybody meet them, and, at, no, they would do that in January, if you agreed on February.
Which is a special meeting.
No, we have a Jan, the schedule, the regular.
It's a regular meeting.
It's a regular.
January twenty-fifth, and then we would have someone seated by February twenty-second, if that's-
With the goal.
Right, if we put that goal date, and as I indicated, I would do everything I could to help facilitate that.
Still feels too slow to me.
Sometimes doing things right feels slow. It's the same thing with the executive director, we've been looking for months, but we're doing it the right way. We have two extremely important jobs, the first two is to hire an executive director, and it's to, uh, uh, elect a, a board member. So, slow, doing it the right way, and I think that having the goal of the February twenty-second meeting-
Is reasonable.
Is reasonable.
But I think part of our responsibility to one another is to challenge each other, and this list could have been made three months ago. This li, to me, this list of, of, uh, recruiting firms, who are, this list could have made, been made three months ago. This ED thing could have been largely in process, we could have been interviewing ED candidates right now. So that's where, I mean, we're challenging each other.
But, but Mr. Jackson, you were also tasked with finding firms, and it doesn't happen as quickly as you would like. I mean, you just-
My cha, my challenge was to call some firms, and I did that in one day.
But we didn't get any proposals.
In one day, it was like a hundred thousand dollars.
No, I understand this, I understand that, that's part of the process of doing things the right way. You run-
Yeah, and it's telling staff to do it ninety days ago, but instead, as soon as we gave this assignment to Lisa, she produced this immediately. This is fantastic work.
It took her, it took her the month to get it together.
This is fantastic work.
I appreciate that you think a month is immediate, thank you.
Well, considering that we've been do, how long we've been looking, talking about EDs and how important it is, it's our top priority, and how long, how many months has it taken us? So I'm just saying that I'm challenging us to, we can do better.
Yeah, but we, we have to be careful deciding that we're gonna rewrite the rules, because we somehow believe that the, that we're not doing good enough. When we, when we ignore authorizer requests, when we, you know, to not have special board meetings, but are, are sitting, well, we, unfortunately, we're not doing, fortunately, we're not doing that. When we bypass committees, collaborations, um, announce decisions with no authority to do so, um, look at ignoring our bylaws, when these conversa, it, it makes no sense to be, to throw out the process because, you know, I just don't think it's moving fast enough, so let's abandon the process.
Albert, are you now saying that we are to do what our authorizers say? Yeah, it may seem like it's a cheap shot, but the fact is, is now those words are being turned around to, to argue for why we at stake, it'll effectively take us, best case scenario, six months to add the fifth board member.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Haney, I have a second by Mr.-
And we're, I think we're having a spirited debate here, that's worth having.
And, um-
It's over now, apparently.
Well, no, it's not, because-
No, we can keep talking about it, sure.
And I think if you read-
I want to get back to the motion, and to say that we now have, uh, asked if you would accept an amendment to fill the board vacancy with a goal of, of, with the goal of filling the board vacancy by February twenty second. If the person who made the motion-
No, I, I want it to be required to fulfill by February.
And then we can't move forward with it, so that, and that's why I'm, I'm there to help facilitate the process, to do my very best to ensure that that deadline is met.
Got it, so we're saying, if we're required to do it by February, it's not gonna fly, but if we-
If you say goal by, we are gonna be moving in the right direction, and I certainly am working at the board's pleasure. I just put that out there.
And when our authorizers say, don't have special meetings, I think in the context of that, it was when, when they look back over the last however many, this is how many regular meetings you had, this is how many special meetings, there's probably, you need to work on that ratio. I don't think they said, don't ever have a special meeting. I think they said, work on your ratio. So if it makes sense, do it, it's a tool, it's appropriate.
Absolutely.
So-
I agree with that, but I don't think this is urgent to call-
It's not, but, but you can't, you can't call me out on the carpet and say, we're suggesting that we throw out the process. We're suggesting that we do all this, I'm not suggesting any of that. I'm not suggesting we do anything wrong. So, but you gotta give me, if you're gonna make a challenge on me, you gotta give me a chance to defend myself, that's appropriate, right? Okay, so, so then it's, the amended is the goal by February.
Right, with the goal by February twenty second.
Okay, I can move with that.
Okay, I got my first.
Accepted.
Okay, I got my second. You guys are just challenging me on Robert's Rules of Order, I know you are. Okay, any more discussion?
No, I'm good.
All those favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? We are moving on. Item number eight, action on staff recommendation related to the creation of OPA board agendas. The board previously requested this staff create a policy regarding how board members add things to the agenda. Uh, and this item asks for you to approve staff's recommended policy relating to the creation of board agendas. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
So I would like to, uh, item number two, where it says, uh, the chairperson, executive director, with assistance of legal counsel, may contact the board member to confirm the intent of their request, and then will formulate a proposed agenda item in a format that conforms with legal requirement. I'm a little nervous about that, that if, by way of example, Albert says, hey, I'd like to get an, an item on the agenda, and then I get to decide, if I were the chairperson, and I'm not, uh, I, I get to decide whether it's a discussion item or a voting item. Right, because we don't-
No, no, I, I think, I, uh, my read on this is, first of all, it has to be written in the proper format. We have, and this is very much in line with our authorizers, uh, we were careful about that. And, uh, the, the matter be, is it a closed session item, or is it an open session item? Not a matter of whether it's discussion or action. So it would have to be placed appropriately in open or closed, and of course, closed is, is specified by law. So it's just a matter of what the law says as to where it's going to go. But, I, I, and I don't know if it's OCD, or if it's capistrata, but one of them actually has, uh, where the board member has to write the, 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 the agenda item. And it's like, yeah, no. And so, you really want your legal team, and you want your administration involved in making sure that we understand what is it you're looking for, making sure that it's written properly, uh, and, uh, and so that's basically what that is saying. But, but yes, then it would be decided, is it properly a closed item, or is it properly an open item? And again, that's determined by law.
Well, it's inter, it's determined by the interpretation of the law. Right, the law, the law is a fuzzy thing sometimes.
I guess, but I think it's pretty clear cut, I mean, Jerry, maybe you could address that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, the intent here is just to ensure that it's, it's framed in the correct way, uh, on the agenda, and so there are certain requirements of the agenda item, for example, be reasonably descriptive. So, for example, if a board member would request-
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm totally down with that, and I don't want to cut you off at sleep, but I'm totally with you on there, and I want somebody to help me wordsmith it and make sure it meets all the requirements. What I don't want to have happen is, if, if I say, hey, I'd like to vote on something that day, and then, I, and then, uh, somebody who thinks differently than me says, ah, we're not gonna vote on it, but we're gonna discuss it. And so, the, the option is in here for me, because I get to write what it is that you want. You say, hey, I'd like to vote on this, and what ends up on the agenda is, actually, we're just gonna discuss it, there's no vote. You, you know, with me?
I, I understand your concern, I don't, I think, I, as I read the policy, uh, to the extent that the board member requests it to be an action item, that the, the council would, would, um, would create the item such that action could be taken on, would describe it in that way.
Well, it's not counsel, it's Jennifer, who writes it. No, I'm, I'm, practically.
That's not, that's not, no.
So, there's, I just want to make sure that there's not gonna be an issue. Right, okay, I'm okay.
I'm subject to you guys, but I, I don't, I don't have a concern with that.
But this policy makes the chairperson the gatekeeper for what gets on to the agenda. Provide, so if there's a judgment call, it's the decision of the chair, whether or not something gets on there.
Well, according to number three, the chairperson has the authority to refuse to place a requested item on an agenda if he or she reasonably determines with the concurrence of the executive director or managing director, or legal counsel, that the request is unrelated to the board's functions or practices.
It's not unilateral.
It's not unilateral.
Well, but what, where I feel like there's a little bit of a, a disconnect there, is I would like that to be stricken, maybe, number three, either stricken completely and said, that if there's a, I don't know, two board members, or half the board says it ought to be on there, then it ought to be on there. And the, because the, the managing director or the executive director can, they're subject to influence by the chairperson, as are the legal, legal folks.
I think if two board members bring, want something, that, that would be sufficient, that it should be discussed.
Two board, and then just to confirm, as far as the Brown Act goes, my initial, when I read this initially, I'm thinking, oh, man, how are you gonna get two board members to talk about, to talk about, you know, the agenda? But I believe, and Albert, you're an expert on the Brown Act, obviously, so maybe I'll ask you, isn't there an exemption to the Brown Act for agenda items only? We're not talking about substance necessarily, but you're just talking about the, for the creation of an agenda, that the, the board can talk about that.
Mr. Simmons?
We actually have the Brown Act expert.
It's not a-
You're asking whether the boards could, could as a whole, in between meetings, discuss creation of an agenda? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I would not think that that would be appropriate, no.
So, can two members talk about it, or can?
In this case, yes.
As soon as it becomes a quorum, no.
Right, as soon as it becomes a quorum, no, so, so yes, two members of the board could, in this case, as you are currently configured. If you lost a board member, then two members could not, because that would be a majority of the board.
Got it, so, so we say two, you ask your friend, you say, hey, I'd like to get this on the agenda, he says no, or she says no, and then you're like, okay, I gotta wait till next month to talk to my other friend about it. No, really, I'm practically speaking. If we did make this two board members.
Yeah, if you made it two board members, then once, uh, then once you had that conversation with one of the member of the board, you could not have that conversation with another member of the board outside of a board meeting.
But that effectively acts as a control, and they're getting too many items on the agenda, or shopping around when you sense that one person's not in support of it being discussed.
Then you're in violation, because now you're bringing the same thing up to another person.
Right, so you, you, once you talk to somebody, and you find out they're not in favor, you can't go and then try to forum shop effectively to find someone who will buy in.
That's correct.
Okay, so there's an already natural control built in to this being abused.
My recommendation is that this was prepared by legal counsel, we had other legal counsel review this, and found this to be, um, a very good policy. I would recommend approving it, um, and then if we feel that there is a problem, come back, and, and, the boards can constantly revisit things. Revisit the policy, and say, you know, this isn't functioning the way that we thought it was going to function, or that we hoped that it was gonna function, can we take a look at that part of the policy and make a revision?
But if we were a healthy board, we wouldn't need this, the reason why we have this is because- Okay, but if, because previously, if we were able to get agenda items on the, on there, we would never have gotten to this point to need this. We would have, you know, people be able to just get items on the agenda. But because there was, there are issues getting items on the agenda-
No, you needed, we needed a policy, and like we talked about before, uh, we've been dealing with so many policies, that dealt with FICMAT, and all the situations that we were dealing with. This is now actually a luxury to be able to start dealing with these kinds of policies.
And I, I think the reason this came up is because we couldn't get issues on the agenda, items on the agenda that specifically I was requesting.
And it was a timing issue, not the fact that you had requested it. So, uh, we do have a policy before us, do I have, and I have a motion and a second, um, is there any further discussion?
Well, I have a lot of amendments that I'd like to make here. I, I mean, they're single line items, but if you're, are you, you're saying, let's just go ahead and vote on this guy as it stands? This, this, uh, this document?
I think it's- Who made the first, uh, motion?
It was Mr. Haney.
Mr. Haney, and the second?
Mr. Diaz.
Um, if it fails, uh, then we can come back and see if-
I made the motion to approve it, by the way.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I did that because that way, uh, if anybody makes amendments, they have to ask me if they want to make amendments. See how, see how quickly, Joseph, I'm learning this stuff. So, so where are we?
So we do have a motion, and we do have a second, um-
Albert, do you want to ask me if I want to make an amendment? No?
I'm, I'm always hesitant to amendments on the fly, um-
But we can always revise it.
I know.
Cause part of what I, again, back to this, you know, if it's a healthy board, and the way things, a healthy conversation, then you don't need items like number four, that say, hey, if, if work needs to be done, then you're gonna withhold it for the meeting agenda. Instead, if it's important, put it on the agenda, and we just say, you know what? There's additional work necessary, and staff is working on that, and I'm gonna give you a little bit of an update about where they are and what they're doing, and how important their work is, and then we're gonna talk more about this next time. But not just withhold something, because it feels- But not just withhold something, because it feels, feels like there's a lot of control here about things just even getting on the agenda. Because at least we can, you know? Does that make sense?
Yes.
It makes sense in the specific example, but when you, but I'm hesitant on writing a policy that just seems to address that one little issue, because, yes, you're right, we can rewrite this at any point in time, but this is a policy that then, any chairperson and a seven-member board would then, you know, are we just trying to fit, make an adjustment that fit what you were trying to accomplish that, you know, that, at that exact time, versus looking from a holistic standpoint?
So, as a part of my evolution as a board member, and understanding the specificity is my friend, I look at a document that says, and I'm going to call your attention, item number five, it says, board members may request that a topic be placed on the agenda which has been recently considered, but there's no specificity. So, I, as the chairperson, I consider the last three years to be recent. And so I want to yank your agenda item, because I consider this recent. And then, what made me think that there might be an exemption was that, in the, in the last page where it says, the chairperson, or the majority of the members of the board who called the special meeting, now how could that circumstance exist if the people didn't talk about the topic of the special board meeting before the special board meeting? It feels like you've got to be able to talk about the agenda, right? So that's why I was asking that question, about the Brown Act and not talking about stuff. Agenda specifically.
Jerry, you review this.
Yeah.
So, help us find holes, if there are holes, and changes if you think, best practice-wise, holistically, they would be a good idea for a board to adopt.
So, so we did not draft the policy, but I did review it. I was comfortable with it. I thought it struck a balance between the interests of individual members of the board, and the desire as the board, as a whole, to try to keep the agendas, you know, moving, and to ensure that adequate staff work was done on items, to ensure that when they're brought to the board, it's not a waste of the board's time, but rather, they're ready and teed up with specifics and information and backup documents to support the action requested. So-
But see, that's a healthy board. Now, I'm not saying we're not like that completely, but maybe, if you had somebody who just wanted to use these things to control what was on the agenda, there's another side of that. There's a, right? So I'm just trying to put some controls in place that say, hey, look, if something needs to get on the agenda, and enough of the board members believe it's important, it's going to get on the agenda, it's going to be talked about. So that's what I'm after.
Right. So if you, if you wanted to go down that path, then I think the way to achieve that would be to amend the policy, to add a sentence saying something like, notwithstanding any other provision of this policy, if two members of the board wish to have an item on the agenda, then it shall be on the agenda. I mean, that would be the way you could accomplish that, if that was, if that was your desire to ensure that at no time could the chair block something that two or more members felt was important.
I would accept that as a revision.
I'm just saying that, that, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't feel that that was necessary, and the balance, in my, in my opinion, but-
Do you feel it's necessary now?
I do not.
Okay.
But I, I understand the policy interest, and, and, you know, so as to the question of how could you achieve it, that would be the way you would achieve that.
Awesome.
Yes, we probably should do that, just in case. So in other words, what she's raising is the point, she wasn't on the mic, what Lisa was asking was, would there need to be a caveat that the, that the board would have to be consisting of more than, of three or more members at the time? So that that way, it doesn't become a Brown Act violation, right? So it would have to be more than three.
Got it. So proviso-
Yeah, because our, so can we do that?
What's it called?
We're allowed to have three to seven board members, our bylaws. Our bylaws do permit a minimum of three, and so adding a provision that would, that would cover that rare situation, but it's happened, where we had three board members, that seems reasonable.
So, so the way you would achieve that, then, would be, if the board consisted of three members, any one member could add something to the agenda. If it was four or more members of the board, then it would require two. That would be a way you could achieve that, if that was your objective.
And, and, but Jerry, you said that you don't feel that it's necessary, and that, that means that if that were written in there, even if the request was unrelated to our functions or practices, that means that we would have to put it on the agenda.
Means you would have to put it on the agenda, and then, at the juncture where approval of the agenda came up, a majority of the board could delete it from the agenda. So the check on that sort of thing, and this happens, you know, sometimes there are times where items get requested, and let's just say the board chair agreed to allow it on. You know, the board majority has control over its agenda at every meeting, and the board majority can, in fact, remove items, even if the chair does agree to have them on the agenda. So, so ultimately, you know, the chair is a facilitator of the board's process, but ultimately, the majority of you, at any time, can, can, you know, can, can put your, put your seal of approval on, on what you will spend your time talking about at each meeting, so.
But at that point, it's all you can do is take items off. You can't put an item on, because you're a majority. Unless the policy says you can put it on.
Well, you, you, so, if there was a request by a majority of the board to have an item on the agenda, that could be achieved at any meeting of the board.
But you'd have to put it on the agenda.
No, because there's an exception under the Brown Act that would allow you to add an item to a future agenda. So if a majority of you tonight said, we wish to have approval of revision to the budget on our next agenda, if a majority of you signaled that, then staff would add that to the next agenda, because a majority of you requested that.
And that would be done during the board comment section?
That would be, that would be an appropriate time to do that.
Okay, great.
In paragraph five, can I ask a question? Who is the determiner, makes the determination of whether information is relevant or not?
Well, the board is deciding, so the board would be deciding whether it's new or relevant.
So walk me through five, because it's, it's December now, and I'm not moving as quickly as I did in November. What happens in that situation? So, we want to put something back on the agenda. A board member wants something back on the agenda, but it has been recently considered. So for the sake of argument, I'll say the prior month, so we don't have to go into, you know, really debating what recent means. And that board member, how does that work? Do they submit something to the chair and say, I've got new information that is relevant, and this is what it is, and I'd like to discuss it? Or revisit what we talked about the prior month? Or does that have to happen? How does that, what is the forum for, for bringing that up?
So, so how I read that is that board members would, would make that request, that they would provide their justification for new or relevant information as part of that request, and then, assuming such new or relevant information existed, it would be added to the agenda for the purpose of the board deciding whether to reconsider the item. So, so keep in mind, this presumes the board already, the board majority, has taken a specific action at a prior meeting, and this is an effort based on new information to get the full board to reconsider that action, that a majority of you already has voted to approve. So it's a fairly limited circumstance, where, you know, the board majority has already voted.
So procedural question is, so I made the motion to approve this, so now can I make another motion to approve this as amended with item number six added, that says, if it's a, if it's a four or more, more board members, two do it, if it's a five or more board member, or, yeah, two people is kind of the top end, and then if it's a three-member board, then one person can put an item on the agenda? So I make a, is that what I do?
So one person can put an item on the agenda?
If it's a three-member board, yeah.
Well, as this is written, one person can ask, an item put on the agenda.
Oh, anybody can ask, and the chair can say no.
In collaboration with the managing director and legal counsel.
Which is what you would want, I would think. You would want something improper coming before the board, that is unrelated to our practices or policies.
Right, so that's why it takes two, it would take two crazy board members to get something on the agenda. That one crazy board member can't do it, unless you're only a three-member board. And if you are, you should hurry up and put a fourth and fifth board member on there.
Could I make a motion that staff provides us with sample agenda development policies for other charter schools, and maybe some school districts, and that we table this to another meeting till we've had a chance to really look and see what's out there? Because I'm not crazy about the language in paragraph five, I think it's muddled. Still have concerns about paragraph three, but I think if we maybe had a variety of documents that we can look to and compare this with, we might be able to either come up with revisions, would make us comfortable, or kind of settle into understanding how the, the same situation's handled by other decision-making bodies.
I have a motion to table, do I have a second?
All second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hold on a second. So, so he's, so we're not even going to vote on this today, so in January, we're back in the same boat, as far as agenda creation.
I'm not comfortable that this changes anything.
Roger.
Okay, any more discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is tabled. Okay. Number nine, action on staff recommendation to commence a study regarding staffing and organizational plans for OPA. One of OPA's authorizers has questioned the job descriptions and salaries of some OPA employees. OPA has provided current information to the authorizer. However, this is intended to be responsive to those concerned. The recommendation is to direct the interim managing director to review the staffing and organizational plan for staff, and return with a revised staffing plan and organizational structure that reflects only the two Orange County schools for the 2017, 18, and the 2018, 19 fiscal years. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second? I will second it. Okay, any discussion?
So all we're doing is directing Dr. Hall to review our staffing and organizational plan?
And there's no timeline, just saying.
Dr. Hall, how long would it take you to do this?
She is one person, I'm sure she's going to use her entire break to do this. Am I right?
How-
Bless your heart.
How did you know?
Yeah.
Of course. I didn't have any plans, and I, and I have a daughter in college, so what, and only a dog that needs to be fed by my husband. So, I'm all good.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. And report back to us, again, report back to us by our January 25th meeting. Is that what your plan is to do, or do you think it is going to take an additional month, or just two months? What are you thinking?
So, my thought is that that, that is an ambitious goal, and I would, I would do everything I possibly could to meet that goal.
Would you feel more comfortable with a February date? Would you prefer this to be with a goal?
With a goal.
With a goal.
With a goal.
Of, of, I hate to, so if it's a goal, I'll meet it. That's the bottom line, so-
Dr. Hall, how much time do you need to do this?
There you go.
That's a really hard question for me to answer, because I have only embarked upon this in an employee capacity, so I know the steps, I just don't know, I, I, I don't know the timeline. So, it could be six weeks, and because we're not that large of an organization, I could need until February, so I would be more comfortable with a by February 22nd date?
Done.
If you're comfortable with that.
Should we do that by 22nd, and if it's not done, you give us an update on where it stands?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, we have by February 22nd. Well, I think she's saying by, and are you saying with a goal?
I said by, with a goal, by, and Mr. Haney added that I would give an update.
Is it with a goal or by?
By.
By, by February 22nd.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, I was much better in November, too.
How about a status of, can I, can we direct it to be, she gives us an update no later than February 22nd? If she has it done, it'll be a complete update, but if not, she may come back and say, I need another 30 days to finish it.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're thinking better than me in December.
With an update by February 22nd, and you made the motion correct?
And we're not real clear on what this study is, right?
I feel pretty clear, but if you would like me to discuss it, I probably can.
Can I, I'm just specifically interested in things like employment contracts. Who has an employment contract, and if so, how much does it cost to buy that out? Are there any special provisions?
Right, so-
It'll take longer than February.
No, it won't, because there aren't that many of them, I hope.
We, most of our employees have at-will contracts-
Right.
Perfect.
That would not require that.
So the handful or so that don't, it would be good to know what those are, and if there's anything special associated with that.
Okay. Got it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Just my one caveat with that, February 22nd, is that I'm going to be okay with the authorizer who raised that issue in there?
I, I don't foresee it being a problem. They requested a plan.
Okay, that's why, just want to make sure they had any conversation, they had an expectation.
So I think that providing a plan will, will suffice.
Okay.
I hope it suffices, and if it doesn't, we'll hear it.
Okay.
So the amendment is with an update by February 22nd.
Correct.
Will the maker of the motion approve that amendment?
Absolutely.
And the second will also approve that. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the final item of the night, action, item number 10, action on staff recommendation regarding pay scales for OPA employees. One of OPA's authorizers has questioned the job descriptions and salaries of some OPA employees. OPA has provided current information to the authorizer. However, this is intended to be responsive to these concerns. The recommendation is to direct the interim managing director to review salaries for all OPA employees, and ensure that they are reasonable in light of their job description and the future staffing plan. Before we make a motion, is there any discussion?
I thought you had to make a motion in a second before you did that.
Well, we're going, we're going to do this a little different, so that we're not having to continually amend, so I'm going, do you have anything that you would like to?
I do.
Okay.
And specific, so, with regard to the future staffing plan, I'm going to say, because obviously, we want to keep our teachers, they're part of our future staffing plan, I'm going to hope that we can engage some sort of compensation, some, you know, reasonably sophisticated compensation analysis that says, look, we're not, we're not Irvine, right? But if I'm a teacher here, I can go to work at Irvine. And we're not Costa Mesa, but I'm a teacher here, I can go to work at Costa Mesa. So I'd be, I would love to have a compensation study done, so that we can be that, you know, kind of employer of choice, right? We get a really good picture of where we are, right, as an employer, right? So, so there needs to be not just a, hey, does this person make $110,000, it's more like, well, that's a good question, and we're going to answer that. Let's, as well, look at those other things.
Well, benefits, too. You know, let's have a comprehensive-
Yeah, yeah.
-examination of what we're able, what we're offering, what we could offer, and how that stacks up to our competition for hiring talent.
And so do we need to give, I mean, you've got the authority to spend, what, 10 grand or so? What's your, do we need to give her some specific dollar amount that says, hey, if you need to get some compensation analysis done, and there's, you know, a consultant or somebody that you need to hire, buy a package of analysis or something, that she can do that, without coming back to us to talk about it? We trust you a great deal, obviously.
I think that if you want to go ahead and do that, that helps me not, I don't think you need to approve anything over, and I'm sorry, I'm getting-
It's $10,000.
Yeah, so I, I don't foresee needing to spend over $10,000, we're, like I said earlier, a smaller organization, so I don't foresee spending over that.
I do.
And I'll know more by January, and if I need to spend more than that, then I would be able to bring that to you.
But I think what I, another thing I'm taking away, and I hope you're taking away the same thing, that I liked what he had to say, is, he's recommending, and I don't want to speak for you. he's recommending, and I don't wanna speak for you.
You like what I said to you.
Yes, I heard loudly and clearly that he thinks I should get myself some help.
Okay, did I speak properly for you? Perfectly. Okay.
Okay, did we wanna put any timelines in on this?
Yay.
February.
I think you need to have.
She learns, too.
Now, if you are going to get help in the kind of comprehensive review that you're going to do, on top of doing the other one.
They go in tandem.
They do, they do, but the research is gonna be thicker here. I mean, it's gonna be thicker. So especially because now you're rolling in teachers on all staff, right? So I just want you to be mindful of that. So if we wrote it the same way, this is an update by, I think that that would.
Done.
Right.
I will happily abide by that.
And you could be close to even the dog kicking you out, so I, that may be your last friend, so please be aware of what you're getting into here, okay? Okay.
And please, please, don't be afraid to come back and say, by the way, the following came up, or by the way, I, you know, I'm gonna need more time. We don't want you to burn out, you know, it's gonna take us a little bit to get an ED. So we'll get you help soon, but in the meantime, you know, we don't, you know, we don't want the dog to find you.
I appreciate that very much, and I, I thank you all for looking out for my well-being and my family life.
Okay.
We tell you that at 12:15.
Yeah. Pretty ironic.
Can I get a motion to direct the interim managing director to review salaries for all OPA employees and ensure that they are reasonable in light of their job description and the future staffing plan with an update by February 22nd?
I'll make a motion.
Are we good?
Oh.
Okay.
You're good?
Okay, okay, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Did that include Raymond's direction for the, the full staffing and the teachers and everything in there?
She's, she's got that.
Okay. All right.
Okay, any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Happy holidays, everyone, it's a new day. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Can we talk about it?
No, this is not up for discussion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, good night, everyone.